By ensuring educational excellence, we challenge and inspire all learners to positively impact their world.
Regular or general board meeting. So with that, we're going to go ahead and get started. If Joan, you could please do the roll call. Where's Joan?
She's right there.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Trustee Angeloni.
Present.
Trustee Hokumer. Trustee Joseph. Trustee McKenney. Trustee Rass.
Here.
Trustee Whitman.
Asa.
And Trustee Young.
Here.
Thank you.
With that, we usually have, at this portion of our meeting, we usually have our recognitions. But this, at this time, we don't have recognitions, so I'm just going to move on down the line to additions and deletions. Trustees, do we have any additions and deletions?
No.
None? Okay. Moving right along. We then are going, I'm going to present to you Dr. Roberson for her superintendent's report and an update on our guidelines, excuse me, for our fall protocol update.
Thank you. So yesterday, I sent out the fall protocols for the upcoming school year. Pre-K through eight, masks will be required. And ninth through 12th grade, masks will be required for when there is substantial and high levels of transmission, according to the CDC guidelines. We will continue this process until November 2nd. And the reason that November 2nd was chosen is to allow our students' continuity of learning through the first card marking period. At that time, on November 2nd, we will review our process. If any additional research has come out that we need to relook at our process, we will be able to do so at that time. So on July 19th, I sent out initial protocols for the fall. And at that time, the CDC had given a recommendation for K through five vaccine, K through five masks for those who are un, and for those who are unvaccinated. Since then, July 27th, we had, the CDC did changes to the recommend, to their recommendation and recommended universal mask, K through 12. On July 29th, I attended a town hall meeting with the CDC, a virtual town hall meeting with the CDC and US Department of Education to learn more about when vaccines might be available for our K through five students or students under 12. To, under, I did attend a virtual meeting. Regardless of what people were saying, I did attend that meeting, and I did find out whether or not they were going to, they did not have a date for vaccines. July, August 4th, the MDHHS released recommendations at that time, again, for universal masking for K through 12 students. On August 5th, I had the opportunity to participate on a call with superintendents from some of the southern states who had already started school. And my purpose of doing that is to understand what is happening in those schools who have started school. Their transmission rates do look different than Michigan, so it is not apples to apples. But in all of the districts that we spoke to, they started with a mask optional requirement or mask optional protocol and had to go into a mask mandate, or some of them were virtual. In August 10th, I had a chance to meet with medical professionals. And on August 16th, I had the opportunity to meet with OCHD. These are all the things that happened since I gave my July 19th mandate, uh, protocols. And the reason that I did these things is to have more information so that I can make a good decision. One of the things that I found out when meeting with OCHD is about their protocols for quarantines and contact tracing. And in those protocols for quarantines and contact tracing, when someone is exposed, they will not quarantine if a student is vaccinated, or if both students are wearing masks and are within three feet of each other. That is the OCHD guidelines that are coming out that they shared with me. One of the things that I thought was really important, I know people have different views on whether or not we should wear masks or no mask, but what I thought that I was under the impression of is that all people wanted their kids in school, and they wanted their kids in person. And the reality is, the reality is.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, this is a public meeting. This is a board meeting. You are here as guests. Ladies and gentlemen, we are going to conduct our general meeting. We know that you have your opinions. We have them written right here where you will take a place in line, but I'm asking you to please respect each other. We are neighbors. We are community members. We are all part of BPS. Please show respect. Please show respect. If you can't, you are welcome to exit. But we like you here. We like having you here. Please let us continue our business. Thank you. You will all get a turn. Everybody's got their card filled out. You will have a turn. Thank you. Please, Dr. Roberson, continue.
Thank you. Last, um, last year during this time, we were talking about being in school or not being in school. One of the things that we heard very clear from the community is that they want their students in person. This decision, especially knowing how the quarantine process will take place with the county, allows students to be in school and in person, and minimizes the disruption for students. And that is our main focus. In addition to safety, is making sure that our students are able to attend school. And so that is why we landed on where we are for our students. Again, our K through eight students, what, students under 12 cannot be vaccinated, and vaccination is one of the ways to be exempt from quarantine. So that's why there are masks required. For our students who are in high school, who have the ability to be vaccinated, but we also know that our transmission rates are high, we want to, again, make sure that students are able to attend in person. And so, again, our, where we landed and where we are until November 2nd is pre-K through eight, masks required, and ninth through 12th grade, masks required when in substantial and high transmission, according to the CDC guidelines.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, absolutely. So now we have board comments?
So, Dr. Roberson, we're here till November 8th. You mentioned that OCHD is the organization that came out with the quarantine rules, correct?
Yes, they're coming out with, they have not printed their latest guidelines, but when I met with them on Monday, they said that they are coming this week, and they shared with me what those guidelines are.
So again, I guess just for the community members, we were under the impression that the number one goal was to get our kids back in school. We did not want this virtual back and forth out of high school, or I have a high school that was rolling out of bed in five minutes and looking at the, you know, the screen. So our mandate to Dr. Roberson was, once the legal organization, which is OCHD, came out with these quarantine guidelines, we then said, what, our number one goal, we're not medical professionals, we're also not people that look, are able to look at a crystal ball and say, what is it going to look like? We said, what is the best way that we could fulfill getting these kids back to school full-time as best as we can without this, again, back and forth, or having to quarantine, or having to say, we're shutting down a school or a classroom? So we didn't make up the quarantine rules. OCHD did, correct?
Correct.
So, and again, I know I'm kind of being, so.
Do you have to follow those rules?
We do. Yes, legally.
We do. We do. Wait, we will have order. We will have order. You will talk when your turn is up.
Okay. But yes, so that's my point, is it's the legal organization, so we legally have to follow that. Because that was one of my questions, was, well, okay, is it a recommendation? Is it a requirement? Is it legal? And we, that is what we have to follow.
My understanding is that we are a public institution, and we follow according to Oakland Schools and the Oakland County Health Division. And this is the higher authority where we look for guidance. And we are doing this for our children, for the safety of our children. I also have two children. I am not fond of wearing masks either. I'm not fond, but I am going to do what is best for our children. And to keep them in school, five days a week, face to face, with such high numbers, is where our goal remains.
Can I just ask, I just want to.
Ladies and gentlemen, please contain yourselves. Please contain yourselves.
So we, okay. I just have one more question that I'm hoping is on all of your minds as well. So, Dr. Roberson, if there are community members that are not happy with these quarantine rules, whom should they reach out to? Maybe this is an Ann Krone question. Whom should they legislatively reach out to to say, we are not happy, we don't like this blah blah quarantine? Help us, community members, know where to focus our attention.
Absolutely. So on the back of that decision makers' charts are a variety of different places that they can contact. It's the OCHD, it's MDU, just, there's also some links for legislators. We also can provide, I mean, it's any of your legislator for your area, but you'd be able to reach out there as well. But that is on that decision maker guide of the July 19 communication that went out.
Okay. Thank you. I have no more questions, sorry.
Any other comments, trustees? Okay, now we're going to move on to your public comment. And here is where it is your turn.
Well, that was. We have more comments first. She was asking questions on the presentation. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Go ahead.
So are there any boards? So, just ask if there's board comments or. Ask if there's board comments.
I can't hear you.
The board comments.
Okay, are there any other board comments?
I just want to.
Thanks, Jody.
Um, thank you, Dr. Roberson. This is a really difficult time to be a new leader of a district, and I just want to thank you for your courage and for doing what is academically and, what is academically best for students, to keep them in seats as long as possible. I know that that was your primary goal. Um, yeah, and so I want to thank you for making this decision and setting clear standards so the community knows at which time it'll be revisited, or for the high school level if it will be rescinded prior to that November date. So, thank you for your leadership.
Any other comments, trustees?
I have one more question. Dr. Roberson, will you be updating, I'm assuming, at every meeting, giving any sort of update on what you do learn from Oakland County, if there are any changes, or just so the community is aware?
Yes, I can, I can update the board each board meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any others? Okay, now it is your turn, and we welcome your comments. I'm going to read very quickly our policy on public comment, and it says, because the Birmingham Board of Education values public meetings, not just meetings in public, we welcome public comment on school issues. Most comments can be concisely stated in three minutes, and the board respectfully asks that comments remain focused on the topic or issue and not on the specific personnel. We welcome your comments, but cannot discuss or debate items, not on the agenda. When asked to discuss non-agenda items, we can share facts, but not engage in discussion. We need to follow laws regarding public notice on issues and be aware that other community members may have interest in the topic, but without proper notice may not be present to contribute. With that, I'm going to begin with our first public comment. Andrea Childers, Children's?
Spell it.
Andrea, somebody out in the hallway?
It may take a minute, because there's a separate room. Yeah. Yep. I came from the math.
Oh, okay, you can please go up to the podium.
Okay, start with it. Well, I want to thank you all. This is a very divided, volatile climate in these two rooms, but we appreciate your right to choose. I got it. I honestly, a few years ago, may have chosen to not get the vaccine and not wear a mask, but now I'm health compromised, I don't have a choice. And so by providing these recommendations, you're really supporting families that don't have another option. I'm in healthcare as well, and predominantly people who choose not to mask or vaccinate have a predominantly healthy family, but that's just not the reality for a lot of caregivers and family. And I've lost family through this. I'm at risk, our caregivers are at risk, and this means a lot to have this support. I've been doing an at-home learning pod with a teacher, and my kindergarten will be starting this year. He's my biggest transmission risk. So I really appreciate that, and I appreciate your right to choose as well. I don't have a choice. And so for the people that don't have a choice, please help us, because we would give anything to be out. Right, yeah, just wear the masks, right? And, you know. Well, I mean.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Irrelevant. If you wanted to, I mean, you're not going to debate.
This is public comment, address us, please, rather than the audience. Thank you.
Well, touche, but yes. So now, I really thank you very much for the support. I understand it may be subject to change, but this helps parents who are also full-time working parents to keep their kids in school, and hopefully not have them bring this home. You know, and not only this, RSV, other things that are on the rise that are compromising our children, you know, so this is. Well, you know, let's just.
Excuse me, ladies and gentlemen, this is the third time I'm asking for respect and cooperation. This is not difficult. We are all adults. We are in this room together. Everyone has a turn. Please, allow her to speak.
Right, and everyone here is a kid, I assume, right? And last thing we want is our children to be ill or pass away. So the greater good and the good of the population, the sooner we put a lid on this, the sooner we get back to not having to deal with this. You know, let's just band together, not be so divided, and just appreciate, this is a spot in time that stinks, and we're going to get through it, but let's just do what we need to do to squash it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Catherine Ziegler. Catherine Ziegler.
Then I would also say, next up is, just some people, because they can't, we're back there.
Catherine Ziegler, and then after Catherine Ziegler, I have Alyssa Spencer.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Kate Ziegler, and my kids will be in kindergarten and third grade at Beverly this year. I'm a surgeon at Beaumont Royal Oak, and I have a bachelor's degree in microbiology, so I'm here to give more of a medical perspective. I applaud the superintendent's decision to mandate masks for our children who are not able to be vaccinated. There are some parents among us, and some board members perhaps, who would like the decision of whether to mask each child, be left in the hand of each child's parents. But unfortunately, that's not how public health works. Masking doesn't protect a classroom of children if only some of the children wear masks. It's critical for each child to be masked to protect the rest of the group. It's like the analogy of the passenger on a boat cutting a hole in the floor of his own cabin, claiming personal freedom of doing what he wants to do in his own cabin, but the boat fills with water, and they're putting everyone else in danger. I teach my kids that masks are an expression of kindness. If we could save one kid in our class from a terrible illness by wearing our mask.
Excuse me.
Why wouldn't we do it? So perhaps the elephant in the room is the idea that COVID-19 doesn't pose a danger to children. Many people have used that belief as an explanation as to why they don't want their children to wear masks in school, that their child contracting COVID would somehow be no big deal. But the Delta variant is a game changer. I have been following the epidemiology of this variant, and sadly, there are more than.
Please continue, speaker, and ignore the audience's turn.
More than 100,000 kids, just this week, just this week, 100,000 kids in the US tested positive. 2,000 children are hospitalized right now, 2,000 children, and right now, a third of those 2,000 children are in the ICU. Believe me, you don't want your children in the ICU. If that trend continues, we'll quickly overwhelm the capacity of pediatric intensive care units in several regions of the country, and it's already happening in Dallas, if you want to look that up. Don't be tempted to look at these children as numbers, because the numbers alone don't tell the whole story. Children with severe COVID develop lung failure, heart damage, kidney damage, abnormalities in blood clotting, and multi-organ system failure. Since the start of the pandemic, 200,000 children have been hospitalized for COVID-19, and many children have developed long COVID with symptoms that persist for an extended period of time. So this virus can cause serious illness in our children, and it deserves a careful set of strategies to prevent spread in schools. We know that it spreads easily in a room full of unvaccinated, unmasked people, so why let our children become a statistic of how quickly the Delta variant can spread in our schools? We don't want to look back at this moment.
But Ziegler, you're out of time.
And we had done more to protect our kids. Thank you so much.
Okay. Next, we have Alyssa Spencer, and after Alyssa Spencer, I have Kristy Pepper.
Good evening, and thank you so much for, Dr. Roberson, so I hope all the parents who have the opportunity to come today. My name is Alyssa Spencer, the parents of people who are new, aren't too young to be vaccinated. I'm here tonight to praise and sincerely thank Dr. Roberson and the board for doing the right thing to protect my kids and remind them of the power of masking. My teacher husband and I chose to move to the Birmingham District, Oxford, in part because we believe it's the best environment for our kids to learn and grow. In the midst of a national panic, we were very impressed by the science-driven decisions that was taken to address COVID transmission.
Last year, our assumptions were largely proven correct, and we are so, so grateful to the principal of our school, Joanna McKinney, for doing an incredible job under very difficult circumstances. I did have one thing I wanted to share as to why this is so important to me, and I know that one key argument, as the last speaker mentioned, against masks is that kids are low-risk. Well, I'm also pretty low-risk. I'm healthy, I take care of myself, I'm not overweight, I don't smoke, I don't have diabetes, high blood pressure, any other condition associated with COVID risks. But last March, I got COVID, and initially, I felt super lucky. I basically had a flu, it wasn't even as bad as the real flu I'd had the year before. And after a week in my room, I, I thought, I'm better. I knew that the fatigue and the lung pain and the headaches I was suffering would go away within the next few days. Only they didn't. And months went on, and they didn't. I felt like a giant was standing on my chest. I felt like I was sitting in a room full of cigarette smoke that was unventilated. I went to bed at 8:00 every night and still needed a nap every day. I worked from my bed for three months. I suffered through unexplained headaches and confusion. Time, the support of my doctor, and changes to my lifestyle have slowly improved things, but I'm still not back to normal. And while I want my kids in school, I don't want my kids or anyone else's kids to deal with long-term health issues like that. I choose, I want to close by focusing on what all of us in this room have in common. We want our kids in person this year. I know I speak for a lot of us when I say that virtual kindergarten was a disaster for my daughter. I do not want to go back there. But without masks, there will be outbreaks in a lot of them. That will lead to schools closing, or at the very least, large groups of kids and teachers being out of school while they get better, or quarantined. The very thought of dealing with that type of disruption in our lives again makes me want to scream and cry at the same time. I hope that because you did the right thing, parents won't have to deal with that this school year. So thank you, again, from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you. Next, we have Kristy Pepper. After Kristy Pepper, I have Amanda Moschieri.
Good evening. A couple weeks ago, I was here offering my thanks for making the decision to allow people to make choices. I have a question. When did public health become only about COVID? Did anyone at the Oakland County Health Department, um, excuse me, did anyone from the Oakland County Health Department offer data that would support these new requirements regarding masks and quarantine? Why last year was three feet plus mask plus pet, plus Plexiglas not enough, and now it suddenly is? I want to see the data. I want to see the stats that support those arbitrary distances. Where are the studies, if any exists, done, were the studies, if any exists, done with N95, surgical, Old Navy, Costco, homemade cotton masks? Did anyone even ask? If, according to the CDC's own website, a surgical mask cannot provide complete protection against fine particles, which are five, excuse me, fire particles, which are five times the size of SARS-CoV-2, why are we to believe that surgical masks that are ill-fitted to our children's face will do the same? How many studies have been done regarding the effectiveness of cloth masks in kids in school? How many have deemed that they stop a virus? I'll answer for you, zero. Yet, instead of pushing back or asking for more information to justify these quarantine mandates, do we just go along with it? Do better. Masks are known to harm children, and I have yet to see, I have yet to see any to-date stats that show that there's a positive cost benefit to them. In school, we ask children to have critical thinking and logic, yet the adults in charge of them are not demonstrating the same. Are we to believe that a dollar store mask, which specifically states it's not intended to stop a virus, a mask that gets shoved in pockets at recess, licked, sucked on, dropped on the floor, pulled down, touched by dirty hands, will somehow protect our kids from this deadly pathogen? And if indeed, that is the barrier between my kid and such a deadly pathogen, then maybe they shouldn't be in school? Bottom line, we need to take care of our kids, and parents know best.
Okay, next, we have Amanda Moschieri, and after Amanda, we have Bob Saad.
Good evening. I live in Birmingham Farms. I have two children, ages five and seven, that I'm grateful will be attending the elementary school safely in person.
I acknowledge the, and the unbelievable shift in faith, despite on school trips in Michigan, the local health organization recommends.
That the districts should issue the safety requirements themselves. And public health really shouldn't be a debate or subject to a vote. Thank you, Dr. Roberson and team, for the strength and leadership to pave a path for the only scenario that yields what should be a common goal for all sides, uninterrupted in-person learning for our students. Unmasked, close contacts lead to mass quarantines. We already have the blueprint, plans carried out by the nimble, tenacious work of building administrators, teachers, and staff during the 2020 and 21 school year. Thank you for holding these standards in place and upholding this district's reputation as a leader in public education. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Bob Saad, and after Bob Saad is Carrie Zhao.
It's okay. It's okay. Thank you. Thank you.
This is kind of finicky. Can we get this to work, or are we okay, or?
They're trying.
Okay. I know, it's kind of finicky. BPS Board, as always, thank you for your diligence and voluntary service to the BPS community. This is Bob Saad, and if you'll allow me, I have two topics for consideration today. On today's agenda under Board Goals, the topic of making a potential board governance change is under consideration. I fully commend the board for sincerely addressing this issue. As I have done for several years, I encourage the board to migrate away from the Carver Policy Board model, under which it currently operates, toward a more decidedly collaborative governance model. I've emailed the board on this topic often, and have provided links to both my website and other supporting resources that answer specific questions about how collaborative models work, and I know you have questions about that. Also, as I have indicated in email to you, the MASB is not likely to support this sort of migration, but there's no denying that collaborative governance models are the most thoughtful and successful solution in this day and age. That being said, if you are seriously considering a move in this direction, I believe that the board will need to seek resources outside of the MASB for direction and support, and I really encourage you to do so. Point number two, I am disappointed that masking will be required for a large portion, if not eventually all, of the BPS student population for in-school learning, as I believe there's ample data to allow family choice in the matter. It's just that simple. I also believe it is contrary to the spirit and intent of Michigan school law to allow and/or require the administration to make such a major decision unilaterally, that is, without board discussion and vote. As I have indicated previously, my family will not be vaccinated with the present COVID vaccination options, nor will any of my children be subjected, subjected to breathing his or her own carbon dioxide for five or six hours a day, nor will I support the testing of any asymptomatic or otherwise healthy members of the community. Because of this, my children will be going, doing online. Because of this, my children will be going, doing online learning until such a time that the restrictions are lifted. My hope is that the administration and Teaching and Learning Department have developed a bona fide, state-of-the-art Birmingham Virtual Academy option, so my children can be taught by, taught Birmingham curricula, by Birmingham Union teachers, under Birmingham standards, and as always, I thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Saad. Kiri Zhao, could you step up? After Kiri, I have Stephanie, Stephanie Apol, I think. Yes, welcome.
Thank you. Back with all this. And the entire CLT and BOE for the decision and email we received last night. I am here in support of universal masking and mitigation measures that support it. I am a big proponent of public schools, and I am on the same team as all parents that want our kids happy, healthy, and together in school. I also have an immunocompromised family member that I seek to protect. As a parent, I feel a greater sense of security that our district is following the science and all the esteemed medical professionals that are making it known what is the actual writing on the wall. It is difficult and sobering, being in this moment in history, as we are watching our fellow Americans in the South fill hospitals with the Delta variant. Our whole country is more connected than we have time to remember from day to day, and we see the workings of society impacted all around. We have heard very tired and very scared parents plead for a variety of solutions, but you don't just have a worldwide pandemic that shuts everything down and fixes it in a couple of months. We are struggling to maintain our marathon mentality, and we do it for our kids. This step of universal masking is the right direction to follow in this crisis, and we appreciate seeing that leadership before we all arrived here tonight. And now, all of us in this room know that swift planning must happen to be ready for August 30. I am looking forward to the staff really getting into the nitty-gritty of how students can be given a routine with detailed instructions of how to transition through and complete the school day, especially with a distance, safe mask breaks, and eating plans. I hope to help in any way that I can as a parent volunteer and be part of the solution. I do this because I hope for my daughters to be healthy and actually have a school to go to with all their friends. The good news is the children, who understand the pandemic is still happening, will see this decision and feel solidarity together. To the kids that have already gotten their vaccine and are masking up again, thank you for your selflessness and thoughtfulness. It's not lost that it's truly a community service that they're doing by continuing masking for the younger students. I can't wait for the day where we can move forward and away from masking. Thank you for seeing this health crisis for what it is, and for doing the most we can to stay safe as we learn more.
Thank you so much. Next, I have Stephanie Apol. Stephanie Apol, and after that, I have Jessica Tobin. Stephanie? Ms. Apol? Okay, here we go.
Okay, is the mic working okay? Okay. Good evening. My name is Stephanie Apol, and I have a sixth grader entering Derby. I wrote this before, you know, the announcement yesterday, so. There is no possible way that at least some of the Board and leadership do not see the same information that I do, that others who support universal required masking do. There is no way that you are not aware of the individuals and groups that have come out stating that masking for all is the safest way for kids and teachers to return to school. So I won't take much time repeating statistics and arguments, including the understanding that barriers reduce the transmission of diseases. One point I do want to remind everyone of, wearing a mask actually protects others more than it protects the person wearing it. For that reason alone, optional masking doesn't make sense. This is an aerosol-spread disease, and wearing a mask helps to block the aerosols from spraying far from your mouth and nose to others. I'm generalizing greatly here, but a big part of the American culture is to be reactive versus proactive. Our legal and justice systems work this way. Police response, how we take care of our bodies, how we treat the environment often work this way. We deal with problems after they become huge problems, and I just have to ask, how has that been working for us? Unfortunately, many can't attend to share their concerns tonight. One reason keeping many from speaking up is fear. Not just fear of public speaking, but genuine fear of backlash and harassment or even violence. The level of hostility is terrible. We've all seen reports of verbal and physical assaults, even acts resulting in murder, all over masks. On April 30th, hundreds of armed white men stormed the Michigan Capitol Building with long guns to protest masks and shutdowns. On May 25th, 2020-
Continue speaking, continue speaking.
-one black man was accused of using a counterfeit $20 bill. The police were called, and he was murdered on camera by a police officer. An average of 24 people per minute are victims of rape, physical violence, or stalking by an intimate partner-
Continue speaking, you still have time.
-in the United States. An estimated 1,840 children died from abuse and neglect in 2019. Five children die every day from child abuse. In 2020, there were over 93,000 drug overdose deaths in the United States. Schools are not responsible for fixing all of our social problems. However, kids spend a large percentage of their waking hours in school. Why not look at how the schools can be agents of change for some of these issues that were here long before COVID, during, and will continue to be here after COVID is gone? How about we stop wasting time fighting over something that is a safer thing to do for all, and spend our time, energy, and resources looking at how the schools can really help make lives better for children, families, our community, and beyond? We are teaching and developing future citizens and leaders. We have the ability to do better, so let's do better than this.
Apol, your time is done. Thank you.
Jessica Tobin, and then I have Amy Williams.
Hi there. First off, thank you to the Board for your service and for allowing us the chance to speak this evening. My name is Jessica Tobin, and I am a parent of an incoming kindergartner and third grader in BPS schools. I am here this evening to voice my strong opposition to the Board's decision to enforce mask mandates within our schools. Our children are now going on their third interrupted school year, and yesterday's email contained zero acknowledgement for the physical, mental, and emotional struggles imposed by mitigation protocols, mask-wearing in particular, for so many of these kids. It also failed to give us any confidence that this mandate was based on scientific data, and more importantly, that it would ever go away. I'm curious how the Board can send communication in July that specifically states, "BPS is committed to supporting warm and welcoming communities, and no individual shall be discriminated against based on their choice to wear a mask or vaccination preference," and not even one month later, send an email that not only revoked that sentiment, but made it clear that masks will remain mandated under all circumstances, including times of low transmission. The earlier claims that the Board's plans will reflect the current environment and state guidelines feels insincere, as state mandates have not even been imposed at this time. We can now all see that data really does not in fact matter. It's almost as if the emails were drafted by two different entities altogether, given the incongruence in both guidance and tone. Your email in July gave so many of us hope that our children might actually have a chance to recover from the trauma of the past 18 months and regain their love of school. We had hoped that the district was setting the tone and acting as a strong role model for inclusion, understanding, and respect for different viewpoints and approaches. We had hoped that those who want their children in masks could absolutely have that option, and those that don't, for various reasons, could also make that choice. You did it during your summer camps, and from firsthand experience, it worked, and it was a beautiful, beautiful thing. I could stand up here and share data about how masks don't necessarily prevent the spread of this virus, or even talk about the potential dangers they cause, but I don't think that would make a difference. So I'm just going to stand up here as a mom who loves her boys dearly and cares about the safety and well-being of all of these children, and sincerely ask you to reconsider this mandate. Thank you.
Next, I have Amy Williams. After Amy Williams, I have Bob McCready. Amy Williams. Amy Williams, and after that, Bob McCready, and then I have Colleen Zammatt, following.
All right, I know we're having issues next door, so this is working?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I want to thank the Board. I want to thank Dr. Robertson for the opportunity to discuss this. This is my first school board meeting, so it's a little overwhelming. But I am a parent of a 10-year-old who's entering fifth grade, and she was in virtual learning last year. And we kept her in virtual learning because I work at the hospital, on the front line with patients with cancer, and over the past year have worked with patients who delayed their care because of COVID, who had their care delayed because of COVID, because they couldn't get the surgeries because there wasn't the beds. It's not just our children getting COVID, bringing it home. Even if our kids, even if we don't end up in the hospital with COVID, we may end up in the hospital because of a car accident. We may end up in the hospital because of a heart attack. There may not be a bed. I've seen it. If we don't take mitigation measures, like masking our children, like masking ourselves, like getting vaccinated when it's an option for us, we risk there not being a bed for our loved ones. As someone who's seen it, I don't want anybody to experience that. And that's why I thank the Board.
Thank you so much. Bob McCready. Colleen Zammatt.
Good evening, Board. I'm here on behalf of my daughter, Kelly Genslinger, my son-in-law, Dave Genslinger, who had to be out of town today to enroll my son in college, or my grandson. My other grandson will be in Seale this year. He has a medical condition that doesn't allow him, according to my daughter, to have the vaccine, and he also has a respiratory condition that doesn't allow him to wear a mask six, seven hours a day. He can't do it. My daughter is in tears every day, debating whether or not to enroll him at Seale this fall. So we request that you please reconsider. I've come here seeing a lot of parents that are saying, if an entire class is unvaccinated and unmasked, then everyone's at risk. But from what I'm seeing, a lot of parents have stated that they believe in vaccines, and they believe in masks. I myself believe in vaccine for people that are medically, medically able to take it. But if half the class or more is vaccinated and wearing a mask, then I don't understand, and this may be a rhetorical question, how they pose a danger to those that are vaccinated and wearing a mask if they don't. If my grandson doesn't wear a mask and gets the COVID, then that's my daughter's problem and situation to deal with, not the school board. So I would ask again that you reconsider, and I know it's a tough decision for you guys, so I don't envy you at all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Next, I have Colleen Zammatt. After Colleen Zammatt, I have Maria Giancotti.
Hi, I'm Colleen Zammatt. I have three kids in the district, a senior, and a ninth grader, and a fourth grader. Three weeks ago, I stood up here and gave public comment, and I asked them questions. I asked a question of our superintendent, of our Board, and any members of the public that might have been watching. I asked them to provide me data that shows that masks have been a useful tool in reducing or stopping the spread of COVID in schools. I have looked. I've become very adept at looking for this information, and I cannot find anything. No one has offered me anything. I will ask it again tonight. What data do you have to support mask-wearing and mask mandates at our school? I expect an answer. I'm hopeful that I will get an answer. Now, we are serious when we insist on choice. I was happy to hear the superintendent's report that she is very concerned about keeping kids in school. I am too. But we bear the burden of our choices, and if it becomes untenable for those of us that do not want to send our kids to school in a mask, to continue to do so, and our kids have to quarantine and miss school, perhaps we will mask up. That is our choice. It should not be a mandate from this school district. And finally, I will just close. Again, the last board meeting that I was at, I could not come to the one on August 3rd. I was appalled, quite frankly, at the abdication of responsibility from this Board. They made, you made, a point to ask questions of our superintendent, Mbika Robertson, that made it very clear that the decision-making power in all of these matters was hers and hers alone. It is not. You have one hiring and firing responsibility, and that is for our superintendent. So for you to try and abdicate this responsibility of such an important issue, such as COVID mitigation measures, I thought that was appalling, and I just wanted to state that. Thank you.
Next, I have Maria Giancotti. After Maria Giancotti, I have Kira Talifera.
Hi. Thanks for having me tonight. When I think of school, I think of community. I think of the staff and the parents working together for the best of the students. I think of parents supporting one another. Since your decisions about masking, testing healthy students, and vaccine clinics started, you have essentially played a role in dividing us. Now, our community is completely divided, and no one's happy with the decision you've made. Many parents got their children vaccinated, hoping that they wouldn't have to have their children masked. Many parents don't choose vaccinations because they know the truth and have researched thoroughly and understand there's statistically a zero risk of death for their children with COVID. They also have learned that masks don't work. In fact, I'm going to leave you with a handout about masks, where it says right on the box that masks, masks do not work. At this point, I don't think you've made anyone happy with your decision. This doesn't make a pleasant environment for our children, for the parents, or for any of you. Since the superintendent and the central leadership team, whoever that consists of, because it's never really been disclosed to us, are the decision-makers, we have wasted endless time coming to these meetings when the Board of Education apparently has no power to make any decisions and vote on this. I don't understand where the transparency has been about this, why we just found this out recently, that you guys apparently aren't going to play a role in that. Many of us have been coming to these meetings for months, and all of us, out of all the 70-plus comments there have been, there's only been one person that's come to these meetings asking for pro-mask. So everyone just showed up tonight because, no, they're against us, which we are parents that want choice. We support the parents that choose to mask and vaccinate. We totally do. We support you, and we're asking for the same respect back. You don't know our situations. You don't know our situations. I'd even say something to the special ed director here tonight. What about the special ed kids who can't function with a mask on? I am a special education advocate, and I advocate for families across the state of Michigan for special education children. What about those children that even have disabilities for respiratory issues? Asthma, special needs. We're just going to mask them up because these parents want it, and you guys aren't providing data? I'm sorry, but it's not right. The regulations say that the superintendent is supposed to work collaboratively with parents and community groups concerned with programs in the school. Can you explain how you work collaboratively for, with us? Because I haven't seen it. I come to these meetings, and we do our public speech, and you guys nod or doodle or whatever you're doing, and you don't say anything, and when I send an email, I get no response, or it's like, "Thank you for your comment." There has never been a dialogue. You're deciding things about our children. I am not giving up my parental rights to the school board, to the superintendent, or certainly to Oakland County. I'm sorry, but we understand you have a hard job to do. We are not trying to be mean. We want to work with you, but you won't work with us.
Thank you, Ms. Giancotti. Thank you so much. Next, I have Kira, I apologize for mispronouncing the name, Talifera? After that, I have Jocelyn Cook.
Yes, yes, I did. Yeah. It's Kevin. I'm so sorry. I, did you say Kevin?
No, you're all good?
Yes, it's all good.
And they can hear me, hopefully, in the other room. Hopefully, awesome. So, dear members of the Board, I come to you today, and I just wanted to speak regarding you guys coming to the correct decision regarding masking- coming to the correct decision regarding masking in our schools. As both a parent and a doctor, I was very concerned with the inactivity of several leaders locally and statewide regarding deferring this decision to someone else and refusing to take a stand with science and for the health of our kids. In stark contrast to the misinformation spread across our country every day, science has shown consistently implemented layered prevention strategies limit transmission of COVID-19 in schools. I'm happy to provide every single PubMed ID of the papers I source in this, so please feel free. I'll give them to you later. A study by Zimmerman et al. showed that requiring students to wear masks, daily handwashing, temperature checks, contact tracing, and two-week quarantines for close contacts led to low transmission in schools even when community spread was high. This conclusion has been corroborated by studies in Illinois, Utah, Wisconsin, and Ohio. Interesting and often used talking point against masks has been the paper by Doyle et al. analyzing infection data in Florida at the end of last year. People enjoy claiming the data proved that there was no increase in risk in COVID-19 transmission with the return to in-person learning for K-12 education. However, they often neglect to mention the finding that the highest rates of transmissions were in districts that did not have a mandatory mask policy. This unfortunate occurrence will continue to recur when we don't listen to science and enact smart, safe policies. Just yesterday, Hillsborough County Public Schools outside of Tampa, Florida quarantined just under 6,000 students and 316 employees due to outbreaks from a lack of a universal mask mandate. My second point of discussion is to address the thought that wearing a mask is somehow detrimental to children's mental health. There's been no peer-reviewed study that supports this conclusion. In many cultures around the world, even prior to COVID, masks are routinely worn outside the home in populated areas by children, and there's been no increase in the rate of depression and anxiety. That is why the World Health Organization and American Academy of Pediatrics have taken strong positions on recommending mask requirements in unvaccinated individuals over two years of age. What does increase anxiety and depression in children is the lack of stability. Children need a safe, stable learning environment to thrive. If we are constantly going into and out of school throughout another year due to repetitive outbreaks, that will be the breeding ground for mental health issues, not because of children wearing masks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Next, I have Jocelyn Cook. After Jocelyn Cook, I have Patty Wright, and then Sarah Flynn.
Hello. My name is Jocelyn Cook, and our daughter Julia is entering fifth grade at Pembroke Elementary. Some of you I've met over the years as my husband and I advocated for our daughter for an inclusive education, because she has Down syndrome. So I understand having a child with special needs. For those of you who've been in the district for a while, you may remember Dr. Neerad had a photo of her hanging in his office for many years. And the picture of my daughter was at the FDR Memorial in Washington, DC, where she was standing under a quote that said, "This generation of Americans has a rendezvous with destiny." She was two and a half at the time. And over seven years ago, my husband stood at a school board meeting and challenged the administration and the school board with this. What is our responsibility as parents, educators, administrators, and community members to help every child in our district, whether the valedictorian or a little girl with Down syndrome, achieve their rendezvous with destiny? Dr. Robertson, thank you. Thank you for your bold leadership in the return to school safety measures. Your decision to put this plan in place will help our children achieve their rendezvous with destiny, because it's putting the focus on a consistent, in-person, five-full-days-a-week education while doing all we can to keep our staff and students safe, healthy, and learning. Our daughter with Down syndrome and a repaired heart defect, a leak in her mitral valve, hypothyroid, you name it, she's got a lot going on, okay? Like many children, she thrives on consistency and routine. She navigated through virtual school, then hybrid, then back to virtual, then back to hybrid, then to full in-person, fully masked, all of that, okay? And she's doing fine, okay? We know that having a consistent in-person school year, even while masked, is way better than all of the back-and-forth of last year. We know that your leadership and decisive action in listening to the medical experts is not popular with some. However, I want you to know how deeply grateful we are for your leadership. As I stated in our emails recently, the only way we can make our way through this global pandemic is not through an assertion of individual rights, but with an understanding of our responsibility to each other. So thank you for renewing our hope that maybe we can make it through this, as we embrace the inconvenience of wearing a covering over our faces in order to protect our classmates, staff, family, neighbors, and community members. And by doing so, we all play a role in helping our kids reach their rendezvous with destiny. Keeping them healthy and
Your time is done.
Thank you. I look forward to a great school year.
Thank you. Patty Wright. After Patty Wright, I have Sarah Flynn.
Okay, thank you. Hi. Thanks again for having me. And I just added this tonight. I too had COVID, and I took ivermectin, and mine lasted a week. Nobody ever talks about the protocols. There's lots of protocols. I don't know why so many people are hospitalized. We can give you that information. There's ivermectin, there's hydrochloroquine, and it's being used every day. So I really hope people that don't know about the protocols really can understand. We can save lives. We can save lives with these protocols. But here's where I was going to start. So here we are again, fighting for our children, the parents that have given you all the information regarding how masks don't stop the spread of COVID. Yet, we received the newest emails stating that we are required to mask up. You told us unless there was a mandate, we would always have a choice in Birmingham. We would like to know why you said that you have no intention of following through, we would like to know why you said that and have no intention of following through on your promises to us. It's not a mandate, it's a strong recommendation. You are making it a mandate. We've given you all the information and facts. You will never be able to say, and I've said it before, we've given you the facts to get our kids back to school and give us that choice. You will never be able to come back to us when all of this comes out that the masks don't work, that there's protocols, that all this is happening. You can come back to us and say, "Gosh, we didn't know. We've been feeding you this information," and it feels like it's going on deaf ears. So we have no other alternative than to rely on legal services. So here is a letter from our attorney, addressed to the Birmingham Public Schools Board of Education, to whom it may concern. My name is Reese Sarah, and I represent a growing number of concerned parents and families of students within the Birmingham Public School District. These families, like many others, both here and in other school districts, have suffered through the difficulties of the COVID pandemic and have had to endure virtual sessions, mandatory masking, no athletic or extracurricular activities, and athletic or extracurricular activities that were limited in attendance and limited by masking and frequent testing. These families no longer feel that masking and or testing should be required for in-person school instruction or participation in school-sponsored athletics and activities for the 2021 and 2022 school year. Further, the families of Birmingham Public Schools seek to encourage the Birmingham Public School Board of Education to implement the following policies. That children of parents who choose to forego masking and/or testing be treated the same as other children, those who do use a mask and undergo testing. Two, that children who do not wear masks or undergo frequent testing be afforded the same privilege to attend and participate in in-person instruction, school athletics, and other school-sponsored activities. Three, that unvaccinated children be treated the same as vaccinated children, and that vaccination status not be used as a determination for disparate treatment. And most importantly, that the district embrace a policy that places the choice of student safety, masking, and testing where it belongs, with the parents of the students. These requests are not mere whims. They are supported by scientific data, ethical and moral beliefs, and out of genuine concern from these parents for the physical, mental, and emotional well-being of these children. Indira Gandhi, the first female prime minister of India, summarized it best when she stated, "We must protect families. We must protect children who have inalienable rights and should be loved, should be taken care of physically and mentally, and should not be brought into the world only to suffer." So in conclusion, while we remain committed to an open dialogue with the Birmingham Public Schools Board of Education, in the event that the district continues a policy that requires mandating, masking, or frequent testing for in-person student instruction, athletics, and other activities, and does not place the choice of student safety, masking, and testing with the parents of the children, our office is fully prepared to take legal action to preserve and protect the constitutional rights, health, safety, and welfare of the students of Birmingham Public Schools. If the district is interested in continuing open dialogue, please contact Reese Sarah. And I have copies for everyone, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, I have Sarah Flynn. Sarah Flynn. After Sarah Flynn, I have Luke Humphrey. Sarah Flynn.
Thank you, Board, for your time. My husband and I are current BPS parents of an incoming freshman at Seale. I have to say how very disappointed my husband and I were to get the email last night letting us know that the COVID mask mandates were going back into effect for this upcoming school year, especially a mere 12 hours before registration. Little suspicious. To reinstate these absurd mandates is both a huge step backwards and a slap in the face to BPS families who should be able to choose what is best for the health and mental well-being of our children. So here we are. BPS has decided to mask up our children, but once again, your announcement has fallen short of providing evidence, data, which we have continuously asked for, science, common sense, and now human decency. COVID poses almost zero risk to children. 4.2 million children have tested positive for COVID, and of that 4.2 million children, .008 have died. The seasonal flu actually kills more children than COVID. The 2018-19 flu season killed 480 children in the United States, yet no mask mandates. These are easily researched facts. Forced mask mandates for something that has an almost 0% chance of killing them is child abuse. Would you force your child to wear a helmet all day, every day, because a rock could fall on his head and kill him? A child has almost the same chance of dying from a falling rock than he does of COVID. Imagine if there was a 99.7% chance you would not get cancer, but you were still forced to get chemo just in case. Doesn't that sound absurd? So what now still are the long-term collateral damages for these ridiculous mandates, we don't know. More children, though, have committed suicide these past 17 months that have actually died of COVID. We've now told our children that the air is toxic, that they could be toxic, and to live in fear. These masks can cause bacterial infections after long-term use. What about facial recognition and expressions for our littlest schoolgoers? That's a huge component for social development. Oxygen is paramount for brain development. Being exposed to viruses actually improve our immune systems. So I have to ask, why are you really doing this? It's not to protect our kids. They don't need it. It's not to protect adults, because they can get a COVID vaccine if they want to, and many of us have the antibodies. So what is the reason? If you ask me, I'd say you do it to protect yourselves politically, period. This is an utter
Mrs. Flynn, your time is up.
And you should all be ashamed of yourself.
Mrs. Flynn. Next, I have Nicole Humphrey. Nicole Humphrey. After Nicole Humphrey, I have Betty Gucho.
I'm going to be a voice for my daughter today.
Certainly.
My heart broke when I opened the email at 8:12 last night and read about the decision to mandate masks for all BPS students. My heart broke because of the physical, mental, and emotional toll it took on my daughter last year to wear that mask, day in and day out. In her words, "When she can't see a person's face, it's hard to know what they are thinking or how they feel about you." It was hard for her to trust people. She had difficulty communicating with her friends or expressing how she was feeling. It was hard for her to breathe, concentrate, or stay on task because of how the mask was making her feel. Our bright, bubbly Josephine changed, retreated inward, and was having emotional outbursts. My husband and I have been working with others all summer long to reverse these negative side effects she was experiencing from wearing a mask at school. She is recovering, but we still have a long way to go. Hearing that the only way she can intend in-person learning is by wearing a mask is unconscionable to us, is not going to happen. It is like asking us to knowingly send her to a place that is abusing her and being like, "Oh, well, if that's the only way I can go, I guess it's okay." In fact, it's not okay. My daughter will not be subjected to what she was to last year. Not allowed to feel or express her true feelings about wearing a mask, which left her feeling alone, confused, and was being taught just to comply and not stand up for yourself and go with the flow, because that's what they tell you to do. Our daughter is healing, and we will not interrupt this process for her. We will be, because of the mandate, pulling her out of BPS schools. I don't know if any of you were abused or put in a situation you did not want to be in as a child, either emotionally, physically, or mentally, but I was. It stinks. It hurts, and it took me years to recover, and still at times I have negative effects from that. As a little girl, I would get on my knees at night and pray to God for someone to help me. We are here as Josephine's parents to stand by her, support her, advocate on her behalf, and not allow her to go through this again. I know Josephine's story may be the only one you hear tonight, but I wonder how many other students are suffering in silence and wonder what it's going to take to hear their stories.
Betty Gucho, you're next.
Hi. I may go over a minute, and she doesn't have anything, so she's going to help me out here. Okay, we've been coming to the meetings and sending emails with reputable links to try to educate the board and the central administration on what we have been hearing that is not, what we have not been hearing on mainstream media. Have any of you bothered to read any of the links or watch any of the videos that we've shared? I don't know. We're on 18 months of the two weeks to flatten the curve so we don't overwhelm the hospitals. Hospitals have not been overwhelmed recently. We went from concern about hospitalizations and deaths to cases which can be easily shown as false positives with the high cycle thresholds with a PCR test. Now we are talking about high transmissibility. What next? Did you know, like Jody said, 90% of the people that were hospitalized and died could have been prevented with proper early treatment? All of the data and science comes from unelected bureaucrats. We are getting their information, who are getting their information from Fauci. Last time, I played a two-minute clip of multiple contradictory comments he has made throughout the pandemic. He has not treated a patient in 40, 50 years. Are those of you that got vaccinated upset that you now have to wear a mask? We were told we just had to stay home for two weeks and things would go back to normal. We were told if we got vaccinated, we could go back to normal. Now everybody is supposed to put their masks back on, and Biden is now saying he's recommending a booster shot. When's it going to end? Our children will never see the freedoms that we enjoyed growing up. They are not even free to breathe fresh air. If God wanted us to cover our mouth If God wanted us to cover our mouth and nose, he would have made us that way. I feel like a broken record. There's a 99.997% survival rate with treatment under the age of 20. Kids are not super spreaders. The vaccine has never been shown to reduce transmission, and I have repeated all of these. I'm just repeating them again, and I will send you links again. Fauci now says they are finding viral particles in the nasal pharynx of the vaccinated people. They are saying the vaccine starts to lose effectiveness after about six months, and vaccinated people are coming down with COVID. Now we're on to boosters. Healthy kids are not a threat. When somebody has a virus, it starts to replicate multiple times. It is not until the viral load is high, when somebody becomes symptomatic, that you can actually spread an illness. You cannot spread a virus that you do not have. You cannot spread a virus with zero or low viral load. Asymptomatic transmission is very rare, according to a study from Wuhan, China. 10,000 people in Wuhan found no asymptomatic spread. Another study showed 455 people who were asymptomatic on contact trace for five days, nothing found. Fauci said the asymptomatic carriers are never the drivers of a pandemic. So why are we requiring healthy people and healthy children to mask up? Before COVID, healthy people were assumed to be healthy until they became symptomatic. At that point, they stayed home, and if they needed to see a doctor, they'd go see a doctor, and then the doctor would decide if they should be tested and treated. And then they'd stay home until they were 24 hours symptom-free. Remember that? Masks basically have a 0% efficacy in preventing viral transmission. The size of a virus, for all the doctors that are out there, your masks just prevent spitting. The size of a virus is too small to be stopped by surgical mask, cloth, or bandana. A single virion of a SARS-CoV-2 virus is about 60 to 140 nanometers, which is 40 times smaller than the diameter of a hair. The pore size of a surgical mask is 200 to 1,000 times that size. Surgeons wear a mask in order to prevent spit, coughing, or sneezing from contaminating a surgical, a sterile field. Masks prevent droplet, large droplet transmission at best. The general public is not trained on how to properly don and off masks, and they are constantly contaminating them, creating a greater risk. Not only are they ineffective, they actually reduce oxygen uptake up to 20% and increase carbon dioxide. This in turn causes blood to become more acidic, which puts people at a higher risk of cancer. Have you ever had a headache, fatigue, weakness, or nausea wearing a mask? You know, I see people touching their masks all the time. I see gaps in the mask, and people wearing a beard need to be fitted. If you want to have a proper mask, you need to have an environmental hygienist fit you for it and test you for it. And it's a medical device, and you guys are recommending medical devices, and I don't know how an Old Navy mask could qualify. The best way for the district to mitigate this is to file the hierarchy of controls based on what industrial hygienists suggest and invest in an air filtration system. I shared with you a FOIA request that was sent by MDHHS that has very weak evidence to support their mask mandate. Please look at it. I made copies for you at my expense. Last year, BPS lost about 600 families. My daughter was one of them, and she had a wonderful year of in-person learning in a private school with no mask, with no issues. Why can't you simply just state that BPS strongly recommends masks per MDHHS and leave it at that? No mandates, no discrimination. Anybody is free to wear a mask. They can wear two masks if they want. They can wear a hazmat suit or goggles or whatever makes them feel comfortable. Remember, you are the elected Board of Education, and your job is to educate the students and support the parents who have the say in their children's education according to the school code. You are not healthcare professionals, and you should not be deciding what type of medical devices our children are forced to wear. You know, those masks actually are under emergency use authorization, too. Please review everything that I sent you and everything that I shared for you. Thank you.
Next I have Kevin Dell. Kevin Dell.
Just real quick, we would like the Board to provide actual data for the mask-wearing.
This is Maxwell. Your time is up.
Thank you, but we still haven't seen the data from the Board.
Thank you.
We need the data.
Thank you. Kevin Dell. Kevin Dell. I have Randy Ghorin.
Good evening. I just wanted to say thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I also want to say thank you very much for the mask recommendation and requirement for my daughter particularly, who is not eligible for the vaccine. But I also want to say thank you for all the parents who have come out today, both for and against the masks. Either way, I'm just grateful for the fact that we have an opportunity to be able to speak and express our opinions. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Next I have Randy Ghorin.
Oh. No, I am, I asked for Kevin Dell, Odell, or Dell? Oh, I'm sorry. Well, you got, you know what? You got a cute little heart there, so I didn't know if the heart was the O or just a...
I guess it's in trouble all the time. Kevin Odell, Birmingham resident, two kids. Thank you for your service and all you do, and know it's a hard topic. We're, we were very upset, too, and we kind of figured, we laughed because we know it's coming, and we're upset. It's like we can write this book over and over for the next six months, the next 16 months, and masks will never go away if we keep continuing this sort of game. We always, we kind of ask, why do we have, why do we, why did the Board, we think, drop the ball? How did that happen, you know? How do we discriminate? I would be up here with the same sort of commitment and support if you put out a statement that said, "No masks allowed at school this year." And these, and some people said, "I really want to put a mask on my kid." I would say, "I support that." So that, so reverse that to me. Not having choice is sort of paramount to, you know, a fallen, you know, system here. So it's, it's really just an appetizer for what's to come also. So in six months or three months, when you go back and make some kind of statement like those that aren't vaccinated can take their mask off, and then those not vaccinated have to be vaccinated for three or four booster shots, it's really divisive, and we've all lived our whole lives among people that think differently and among people with all kinds of diseases that we don't have privy to their, what their issues are. And COVID is no different. For the 100 million Americans that have natural immunity, it should be addressed, which is probably a third of our community. It should be addressed by the Board. And the only reason we think that it's probably why this continues on, I guess, higher up on Dr. Robert Roberson is, I guess, money, because it has to be those, you know, nobody in here has probably ever gone for healthcare to the Oakland County Health Department, probably. And they have really no say in our lives at all, and it's just a suggestion, and highly recommended, but if this was a business, they would fail because all of us would walk away and say, "This is no good." So we certainly support choice ongoing. We'll be happy to get any kind of update in the immediate future. Otherwise, we, of course, will not be back to school, which is a shame because the broken spirit, which is happening to so many of the kids, all because of, out of fear, you have to overcome. There's those that rush in the building, are fearless. You don't blame everybody else standing by that they didn't step up and go save the dogs and kids in the house. You don't blame them. You, you know, you can overcome your fears. Oh, thank you. And we can do a lot better by, you know, we all definitely need each other's support, and the kids need teachers, and just don't take the top down. I always thought we all worked together, and then the Board was sort of the top funnel. But I see the top funnel, the top funnel is OC, is, you know, MDHHS, and probably their money, because I was, I stayed for the budget meeting, of course. Everybody's being paid this year and next year because of promised money, so I know there's, it's just a shame. Let's do better. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Next I have Georgia and Eugene, and I apologize, I cannot read the last name. It's D. something, Dikim, Georgia and Eugene. Can you please say your last name for me?
Yes, Dixon. D.I.X.O.N.
Dixon. Got it. Thank you.
Since we're, I just wanted to say, you talked about the CDC a lot, with the CDC figures. The CDC, I came out the other day and said that in a normal flu year, there's between 24,000 and 62,000 deaths. Last year, less than 700. Wow! No more, no more flu. Follow the money. It's all about the money. Beaumont Hospital gets money because they call it COVID, okay? We had, the people that died, most of them died, quote, "Not from COVID, but with COVID." And therefore, the hospitals and the physicians and that whole group got federal money, including the funeral homes. Okay? It's all about the money. I'm, I'm 76. I do not have a child in school any longer. I'm a grandparent. I have a two-year-old. I'm not concerned about next year or the year after for us, but I'll tell you, if, if the people that are fearful are in charge with their mask, you will be wearing masks for the rest, for the next dozen years. Everybody else will be wearing masks in order to comply with those who are fearful or hypochondriacs or whatever their issue is, okay? But just because some people are fearful doesn't mean that healthy people should have to wear a mask. The children have natural, people have, people have natural immunity. They need to, they need to have their natural immunity be tested out in the world because there'll be other viruses coming along, okay? And if they're just wearing a mask trying to keep away from COVID, it's not going to, it's not going to work. But we will be here five years from now going through the same BS if the people that are masked are in charge, okay?
Thank you. Next I have Sheri Brown. After Sheri Brown, I have Kristina Odell. Oh, I thought you were together and doing...
Whatever.
Okay.
Hopefully will, but I'm really surprised that you're carrying out this hoax. You know this is from Whitmer. You know this is from the Health Department. You know this is from Oakland County. You know this is from Biden. You know this is from Barack and Kamala and Washington DC and the CDC and Fauci. This is a hoax, okay? We're sick of it. We're sick of it. We're sick of it. People that are fearful and worried and concerned, they should stay home and stay safe. They have choices. There's in-home learning, there's virtual learning, there's all sorts of different types of learning for every person, whatever their issue is. I don't want to be compromised because of someone else's fear, and this is manufactured because we are going down the Marxist agenda here. You've, I'm 70 years old. I used to see pictures of Communist Chinese children, all in masks, all stepping to the drummer. That's what this is all about, Marxism. This is selling us out to the Chinese. And if you read any of the social media today, for what it's worth, New Zealand is in total lockdown because of one Delta case. That's what I read, for whatever it's worth. Whether it's true, not true, but if you want to be in lockdown and in lockstep for the rest of your life, you go ahead, but I don't want it. It's no life. And as an aside, because I am 70, I live with measles, smallpox, malaria, polio, rubella, chicken pox, everything. And when one kid had it, the whole class had it. And the teachers knew when they were taking teaching positions that children got sick. Okay, they had choices, right? But we've had to pay them for this last year to stay home with all of their benefits, okay? Because they're fearful that they might get a germ from a child. They knew that this is what the job held in store for them potentially. Their choice, I'm not sorry. You have polio, you worry about polio. Believe me, you can be dismembered, disabled, very, 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 very sick. A virus, a germ, unfortunate, but you'll survive. Really? It's, it's really disgusting, the path that people are taking now. And because we're headed towards a world war, a world war, Afghanistan has fallen, Kabul, the Iranians, the Chinese, the Russians, how are we going to prepare the young people to go to war and defend the country if they're worried about this? How are they going to fight? Nobody wants their child to go to war. Nobody does. Don't misunderstand me, but sometimes it's necessary to have a military to fight. We have no fighting spirit here.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Next is Sheri Brown.
I am, my name's Krista, and I have a graduated 2020 graduate and a son who's a freshman, actually going into a sophomore, rising sophomore, should be going to See Home. He did not go last year. So to say that I'm disappointed in the district's decision to mandate masks for our kids is an understatement. We were in the process right now of re-enrolling him back into the district. We were very happy with what we saw in July from the district, and we were taking that next step to come back. I don't think that's going to happen now, and it's very, very sad. Sad for him because he's been with these children all of his life, and I don't think that's going to be a reality for him, unfortunately, because of this current mask mandate. You know, I thought that you were the people who are supposed to be standing up and fighting for our kids. I can't believe that putting a mask on a young elementary student can qualify as looking out for their best interest. Where does this end? What is next? The Board is continuing to make medical choices for our children. You are blindly following government agencies. My question is, have you heard the residents that have been attending these meetings? They have shared so many studies with you. I have been sitting here, listening to them. They have emailed you study after study, and I just don't know that you have heard them. It's, it's very upsetting. They have used statistics from the CDC and our own state health agencies, and they've given you all that information. Have you looked at it? First decisions were being made because of the death rate, then it was ICU, number of ICU beds available, and now transmission rates. Where does this end? The goalpost keeps moving. Shouldn't we be questioning why our government agencies keep changing the criteria? Oakland County has made a mask recommendation, not a mask mandate. Why is Birmingham mandating? We were told that if there was not a mandate from Oakland County or MDHHS, Birmingham would allow parents and students to make their own health decisions. It appears that Birmingham is looking for any reason to impose mandates on our kids. Just 36 hours ago, a group of Birmingham parents started a petition supporting not masking our K-12 students. As of right now, there are over 1,700 signatures to not mask our K-12 students. Over 1,700 people that believe parents should have a choice, and that is only the beginning, I believe, of that number. That number is growing. Many districts are not mandating masks for their students. I beg you to stand up and fight for our parents to be able to make their own healthcare choices for their children. Any mandate by Birmingham is unnecessary and shameful. Individuals must have choice. That is our right. Stand up and fight for our kids. Thanks.
Thank you. Sheri Brown. I called Sheri Brown earlier. After Sheri Brown, I have Adam Prescott.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Sheri Brown, and I'm in the medical field, and I'm also a professor, so I'm well-versed in medical information, education, conducting, and evaluating research. In response to last night's email regarding a mask mandate, I'm very confused. I thought that this is Birmingham Public Schools Board of Education, not the Birmingham Public Health Department. However, it seems as if you have decided to go beyond the Department of Health recommendations and mandated the placement of a medical device on our children. As stated by the FDA, the use of masks has not been proven for antiviral protection, and as a matter of fact, it says on the box, it does not prevent the spread, spread of disease or infection. By placing this on our children, you are applying what is considered a medical device. And if you're going to act in this capacity, you are required to obtain informed consent. According to the FDA, informed consent means that you need to provide the understanding in nature of a procedure or a device, understand the risks and benefits, offer reasonable alternatives, and understand the risks and benefits of all these alternatives. It also states that consent cannot be obtained under coercion, meaning no undue influence, punishment, or reward. In my registration packet that I filled out for my two children recently, I did not see any paper that provides me with the benefits, the risks, or the side effects of a child wearing a mask for seven to eight hours a day. I did not see an offer of other options, nor did I see anything asking for my permission for you to apply a medical device. Not only that, but I am pretty sure that saying that a child will not be able to attend in-person school and receive a free and appropriate in-person education is a form of coercion. So basically, you have not met the criteria for informed consent at all. Based on this, not providing us with any risk or benefits for wearing a mask, I had to do my own research. I have at least 46 studies, mostly from the National Institute of Health, demonstrating that these masks do... that these masks do not prevent the spread of viruses. I also have 26 studies from the National Institute of Health demonstrating that long-term mask-wearing can have negative effects and consequences on the wearer. So are you willing to take on a liability for any adverse effects on our children's health? These studies demonstrate breathing difficulties that are created and exacerbated by masking children. And I do believe that Section 1307B of the school code prohibits school personnel from providing any restraint that negatively impacts breathing. I understand it is difficult to make these decisions when you are dealing with a lot of emotions on either side of the topic, but your job is not to mandate medical decisions, especially when the Health Department has only issued recommendations. You are the superintendent and Board of Education. Your focus needs to be on educating our students. Please leave health decisions and choices to parents and their doctors. Thank you.
Next, I have Adam Prescott. After Adam Prescott, I have Paul Markham.
Hello. I am the father of two children at West Maple and the husband of a high school English teacher in another district. Thank you for making the decision to require masks in K through eight at all times. I believe this is the best decision to ensure the students and staff are protected and that our schools are able to stay open. There's a great uncertainty surrounding the impact the Delta variant will have on this upcoming school year, particularly with younger students where a vaccine is not yet available. Since our schools do not have adequate space to enforce social distancing masks feel like our best reliable defense against the virus, then I was deeply concerned about a mask's optional policy. The CDC recommends that all students attend full-time in-person school with multiple layers of protection. Without masks, I felt like we had zero layers of protection. I'm hopeful that there will be a vaccine available for younger students soon and I hope that we continue to embrace multiple layers of protection while there is still so much uncertainty. Birmingham Public Schools is demonstrating that they are leaders in Oakland County who are prioritizing safety to ensure that we have a stable, equitable and safe environment for staff and students. Thank you for following the MDHH's, this is recommendation that all schools require masks for students. Thank you again for making your decision.
Thank you. Next, I have Paul, is it Morecambe? Markham, thank you. After Paul Markham, I have Lori Teteronco.
Just a lot of it's been covered, I almost feel like ripping this up, but this room's awesome, right over here, this room is amazing. Two weeks to slow the curve and here we are. Choice again was taken from us right at the last second. Okay? Why? You want to wear a mask, fine, wear a mask. No one's, no one's saying you shouldn't, okay? Why must everybody be unconstitutionally mandated to wear a mask? I, I mean, why? We do not comply, political from the start and it still is. Okay? I put this in my letter to you all in which no one responded, which I actually thought that would happen, but my daughter's freedom is not up for negotiation with any of you. Okay? Requiring masks for healthy kids is child abuse, a few people mentioned that. And all for a 99.7 recovery rate unless you have an underlying condition. This has never before happened in history and every person in this room should be asking why? Okay, why are they pushing this so hard? I've never seen a pandemic have to be promoted and talked about so much. Otherwise you wouldn't know it was there. Okay? Mandating a mask is, is illegal, okay? And I, people commented on this, I, I just bought this, trust me, I'm not wearing it. But it's right here, right here. Warning, this mask does not eliminate the risk of contracting any disease or infection, change immediately if contaminated with blood or body fluid. Wow, okay? And you're, this is what's most commonly worn and some of you are wearing that right now. And the second most commonly worn says not recommended for children, pregnant women or elderly. Okay? I, I will look, I will look forward, if this somehow goes through and we're, my wife and I are talking about also taking our child, we had one that graduated, we're talking about taking them out. But I will also look forward to someone on the board sending me the mask and shot exemption form. Thank you.
Next, I have Lori Teteronco.
Hi, I'm Dr. Teteronco. I have a daughter that just graduated from Seehome and I also have a younger one and is a sophomore at Seehome as well. I'm very, very concerned about, like everyone has mentioned here, the political atmosphere. I do believe that there is more fear and political thing that is driving this mass hysteria, mass is M-A-S-S and M-A-S-K hysteria. The masks really do not protect the person wearing them, nor the other person in the room that may or may not be wearing them. We really need to look at the data and there is, like everybody has mentioned, there is a lot of data behind that. And even the CDC and NIH have had data that says to this effect, that the people that have contracted COVID, the majority of them were wearing masks, 70% of them. Those that did not wear masks, it was 4%. This data is out there. And everybody has mentioned how dirty these masks are. These are moist collection of, like a diaper, actually. They have been, they have been colonized, they, they took and cultured them and they grow E. coli, they grow MRSA, they grow TB. We're breathing these in, we're making our kids breathe these in. They're going right into our lungs. People that are in the hospital also have pneumonia, so they may test positive for COVID, but most of them have pneumonia from the masks. And this was actually demonstrated and talked to about, Fauci even had that in one of his many, many articles in, that he had published about the Spanish blue in 1918. Majority of the people that died had masks on and they died from bacterial pneumonia. What we're doing to our kids by wearing a mask like this young girl here is true. I see kids all day long. I see kids of teenage years. I've even seen psychiatrists who have kids at Seehome and I may ask, ask her as well to come and speak. She has been seeing people in the hospital hospitalized with suicidal tendencies. She's seen people in the hospital with OCD. So I, I am a dermatologist, I use all the preventative medicines that people have been talking about. I use Plaquenil and I use Ivermectin and they are safe and they are safe in these kids. We do have regimens that you can use to prevent this. It's been used in countries, it's been used in third world countries where they're over the counter. They can be used. I have my kids on them and they will not be getting COVID. We need to have safe alternatives and please, please, make a decision for the kids for their best interest. They're wearing masks that cannot hear.
Thank you.
Teachers who say they can't teach kids with masks on.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Danielle Davis. After Danielle Davis, I have, I think it's Mirina Hollins, but first I have Danielle Davis.
Hello, my name is Daniela Davis. I come to you as a precinct delegate. I ran for the House of Representatives. As a state rep, I, I, I did not make it, but I do know I have many, many friends who are state reps. This issue is very political. I have inside information. It's also money-driven. And so I have something to read from a petition and then I want to talk to you about the political side because I have information, I appreciate the, the doctors that talk about the medical side, we need to know that, and I want to talk to you about the political side. I did run so I could fight for our freedoms because I believe that everyone should have a choice. And what we're doing is very unconstitutional, demanding for a mandate like this. It goes against our constitution. All of us should be well-acquainted with the constitution. We have our children that take the history classes, I think each one of us should also. Our forefathers would be rolling in their graves. This is wrong. We are the best experts on our children, the health of our children, what they need, what they should do. We recommend and we mandate with our children. And then there are some things that we will allow the school district to impose because we are sending our children to school. There are things that we don't agree with and so we come to you right now, we would like you to consider to reconsider the mandate. I am for the choice, people can wear masks if they feel they can wear two or three, they can bring a change of masks would probably be the best course of action if I believed in that. I would not have a stinky wet germy, frequently touched mask all day. I would equip them for two or three masks daily. They are touching their masks a lot, it breeds, it's just a, a germ. So let me read what I, what was sent to me. I'm a precinct delegate and so I do represent a, a large neighborhood in Beverly Hills. And so I'm going to do this, this is on a petition. And thank you very much again for this forum. I believe that this is needed. Okay. Thank you. Oakland County children have experienced some of the worst effects of the COVID-19 pandemic. After more than a year's worth of data and science, we know that children are the least at risk for COVID and have a survival rate of over 99.9%. Pediatric mental health issues and substance abuse has increased significantly. Our children have sacrificed a year and a half of quality education and experiences to protect others in our community that have the greatest risk of COVID-19.
Mrs. Davis, your time is up.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Davis.
Thank you. Please consider the facts and the science behind.
Next, I have Mirina Hollins.
I want you to, if you're done, I'll, I'll continue. Okay, thank you.
Okay, then what is your name, honey?
Annie Maxwell.
Annie Maxwell? Okay.
Annie, you stay here though, that's important. Thank you. I will just continue with this, thank you very much. Our children have sacrificed their education, social and emotional health for 17 months. Our children matter. It is time for our community to protect our children and put them first. Those that are at the greatest risk of COVID-19 in our community have the ability to get vaccinated if they want, test and to mask as necessary to prevent themselves from getting sick, if this is what they choose. Our children at school pose a statistically zero risk. They are not known to be carriers or transmitters. It's time to allow our children to have a normal school experience again.
Next, I have Mirina Hollins.
I would like to thank you, the board and Ms. Robertson, Robertson, thank you for having us here and all of parents that are here and thought, I'm a mother first, I'm also an essential worker. I come in contact with over 300 to 500 people a day. I'm a flight attendant for Delta Airlines for the last 21 years. I fly international route. Within the last month, I've been to three continents. I get tested for COVID every week when I go to work. My daughter gets tested. I chose for her to be home for a year and a half because I didn't want for her to give anybody anything from me. So we need to start thinking about each other. I want to read something to you. My daughter wrote this. Dear Nana, you are very special to me. I will never forget you. I miss you, Nana. You taught me to be kind and curious and I love you for that. Your baby girl, Blake. This letter was written April 20th, 2020. My daughter lost her Nana to COVID. The only person that she was able to go and stay with while her mom did her flights international for to five to six days. To this day, my daughter cries at night about COVID. The kids aren't afraid of wearing the mask, it's the adults. The kids will wear the mask. They will do what, what we tell them to do. The kids will wear the mask. The kids will wear the mask. The mask is not effective.
Ms. Hollins, you can continue speaking with us, address us.
Thank you. You know, Delta Airlines, hands down, they have set the presence for airlines with mask wearing. Dr. Zing, which is our leading surgeon, leading surgeon at Delta Airlines, have required all children under 12 wear masks on the flights and in school. This is his recommendation and we follow the science. Every time you go on vacation, you get on an aircraft, you're wearing a mask. You're indoors. Why can't kids wear a mask indoors? It's nothing. We all need to wear the mask in order to be effective. Thank you. Thank you all, I appreciate you all. We are all parents first, let's think about the community and each other. Thank you.
Nicole Kessler. Nicole Kessler. After Nicole Kessler, I have, and I'm sorry that I'm murdering this name, it looks like Alandria Howard, but first Nicole Kessler.
Can you hear me? Yes, perfect. Thank you for allowing us to be here today. I, I just wanted to speak out and let you know that I truly appreciate this decision that you've made. It will allow my son to finally come back to school and he needs to be in school. And my family had made the very difficult decision to unenroll our child had the Birmingham Public Schools not decided to institute a policy of universal masking. Last night, when I told my son that you had made the decision, a very, very brave decision, that he broke down and cried all night because he wants nothing more than to be back with his friends at school. And he has medical issues that preclude him from being able to be in an unmasked environment. In addition to that, he is hearing impaired and I have been assured that wearing a mask, even with his hearing impairment, will not in any way, shape or form impede his ability to learn because we have made several workarounds to get around that. So again, thank you for your bravery. Thank you for following the recommendations of scientists and not listening to people who do not have the appropriate experience in public health policy or medicine. Thank you. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen of our community, we have a low battery on the microphone up here, so we're going to take a five-minute break so that we can recharge that battery and then we'll reconvene. It is 8:51 minute break. Thank you. We're going to call the meeting back to order. Break is over, thank you for your patience. Next, I have Aladria Howard. Aladria Howard, after that, I have...
Say it again.
Excuse me, I have Aladria Howard, I apologize if I'm mispronouncing the first name. And then after that, I have Amrita Singh.
I'd like to say good evening to everyone here respectfully, both sides. Tonight is heart-wrenching. And I'm going to say this, I work for a prominent pharmaceutical company that has nothing to do with it. I have a mask on my face that has nothing to do with it. What it has to do with is the straight-out care for all of our children. Black, white, masked, unmasked. I'm a mother of two children who had COVID. masked, unmasked. I'm a mother of two children who had COVID. I watched my children gasp for air. I watched them. It wasn't the mask. Excuse me. Don't. I watched them be on breathing treatments for months, crying, wondering why they couldn't breathe. They didn't ask for this pandemic to happen. I didn't ask for it to happen. It's all an inconvenience for everybody in this room. It's a straight-out inconvenience, but guess what? Sometimes you have to do other things to be, to come out of the inconvenience. How many people don't like to put on a seatbelt when they get in a car? But you do. But you do. Why? Why? Would you stick your child in the front seat without a seatbelt on? That, that piece of strap here, let me tell you something about that there. They get into a car accident, right? They're likely to be damaged, but they won't die. You can get chest compressions that, from the impact of the seatbelt will break the third and fourth rib in here, but you won't die. That's the same thing what the mask is about, is the fact of not dying. Let me tell you something. Down in Mississippi, where they've already started school, Smith County, 16,000 people in that county. In the past week, they recorded 2,012 cases, 96 deaths. As of August 6th, there were 78 students that tested positive. Over 479 students across four school districts had to be quarantined. They just buried a baby. So you want to talk about not breathing in a mask? You can't breathe in a casket. You can't breathe in a casket. So look, I would rather take my chances on life than death. Because everything we do in this day and age is a gamble. If you don't look both ways when you cross the street, you get hit by a car. Right? So why don't you stay home? If you don't want, if you do not want your child to wear a mask,
Your time is up.
Then you can stay home as well. I just want to say thank you to everybody. But look, let me tell you something.
Ms. Howard, your time is up.
It's real.
Thank you. After Amrita Singh, ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, let's move on to the next speaker. Thank you. Amrita Singh. After Amrita Singh, I have Emmanuel Rousse. Ms. Guzhao, can you? Okay, Amrita Singh is next. Yes, please.
Hello, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, perfectly. Thank you.
Dr. Roberson and Board of Education, I am here to thank you for the science and fact-based decision to protect our children with masks this fall. Someone mentioned earlier that children with asthma cannot wear masks, which is completely false. We do have a son with asthma and unfortunately, many family members with asthma that wear masks like a champ. So we are hoping and very appreciative that his little buddies in his first grade class will be there to protect him and each other. For reference, I am a healthcare professional. I touch patients for a living. I am masked and I wear eye protection both before and after the vaccination. I am not scared and I am not in a bunker in my home. Public health is not a choice. Can a teacher, can a teacher decide to smoke in a classroom if she wished? Of course not. Her decision to smoke would negatively impact the health of the others in the room. Being unmasked hour upon hour, day upon day, exhaling coronavirus in a closed indoor space around other unvaccinated children should not be a choice in a global pandemic. And if a family thinks masking is not a feasible choice for their child, then there's always the virtual option. Thank you again for your decision.
Thank you so much, Ms. Singh. Next, I have Emmanuel Rousse.
Thank you. My name is Emmanuel Rousse. I wasn't planning to speak today to you because especially since yesterday's email was more of a dictat than an invitation to a conversation. However, I'd like to say just a couple of things to add to the enthusiasm in the room. It's very encouraging to see so many, so many people have done the research and so many people are firmly with their feet on the ground. And whichever decision you think is best for your children, it should be yours and yours alone. And I'd just like to touch on a couple of things which I think weren't stressed. I don't want to add to the dates and the science cited and the emotions. I just want to emphasize the direction where this whole year and a half has been going. And it's a direction away from an individual and closer to collectivism, to group rights rather than individual rights. It's one of those moments in which individual sovereignty gets lost and it's very hard to recover that. And I'd like to all, depending, independent of where you stand on the particular issue, clearly masking children is insane, is beyond comprehension. But no matter where you stand on the current issue, I'd like to, I'd like you to, you to think about the direction in the slippery slope where this is going, in which parents so enthusiastically voice their opposition towards other people forcing masks for years, for hours and days on end on their children, and it gets completely disregarded. And I am not optimistic that anything will change. Hence, we will not be participating in this school year. We moved here more than five years ago when my daughter was six months old with one of the two basic reasons being that we would hope, we wanted our daughter to participate in this school district. Now, two weeks before that, we learned that we will not be able to do that because ridiculous, insane restrictions. And I would just like to stress this final point. No matter where you stand on this issue, think that the success of any civilization has stood on the sovereignty of the individual. And the sovereignty of the individuals is very, very hard to get back once it's lost. Thank you.
Next, I have Chad Mayer. Chad Mayer. And after Chad, I have Luke Humphrey. Did I mispronounce the last name? Is it?
Hello, my name's Chad Mayer. I'm a clinical immunologist, board certified, board certified pediatrician. And I just wanted to go into more of some of the science behind what has been a problem in this country. First of all, do need to call out school districts that what I have seen and what we do see is a clinical scientific illiteracy in this country. And the inability to understand science, and by the inability to understand science, has led to people forming their own opinions. And opinions don't really have much of any use in science. People saying, do your own research. You should be able to research and figure out if these things are real. Has been a problem. We have the American Academy of Pediatrics, the Michigan Academy of Pediatrics, and the CDC all recommending for children and basically everyone to be wearing masks. The Michigan Academy of Pediatrics and the American Academy of Pediatrics, sole existence in this world is to support children's well-being, health and mental, physical health. There is no real science out there that shows masks are dangerous. You can breathe with masks. There is no...
Excuse me?
I am actually the scientist here. I'm actually the specialist. I'm an immunologist. I'm a respiratory therapist.
Excuse me, ladies and gentlemen, please allow the speaker to finish.
I'm a respiratory specialist. I specialize in asthma. Masks are not dangerous. We've, I've been wearing, I've been in medicine for over 30 years. I've been wearing masks since I was 19, when I first got my first medical license. The science that people are coming up and saying this, you know, we don't believe the CDC, we don't believe the American Academy of Pediatrics, we don't believe the scientists out there, is still the origin of having poor education in this country. And you have to actually listen to the experts in this country and the world. And if you listen to people's feelings, you will be going down the same pathway of ignoring the real science that's keeping people as safe as possible in this world. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Luke Humphrey.
Hi, I'm Luke Humphrey. A lot of stuff's been said that I've already, that I wanted to say. But I, you know, honestly, your letter last night, we knew was coming. So we took the steps preemptively and, you know, it's sad because we moved to Beverly Hills to be in the Birmingham School District. And it's, it's a shame that we won't be in the Birmingham School District this year. So when you talk about choices, you're right, we absolutely have choices. And so our choice for our family was to remove ourselves from the district since we felt that it wasn't serving us. You know, I just thought about the, the high transmissibility in that. And, you know, to the doctor's point, I mean, I'm, I'm old enough to remember when last April and March, we were told we weren't going to have enough ventilators and people were going to be dying in the streets. And yet, we found out later that ventilators actually killed people. So, you know, so we do, we know a lot more now than we did then, you know? And I would never put those deaths on that physician, but for him to stand here and say that we're too stupid to figure out what's real and what isn't, is pretty condescending. So just some questions I had. Why did the WHO, the World Health Organization, change the definition of herd immunity? Why does that no longer include natural immunity from people who've had... I don't know. At the end of the year, the CDC will remove emergency use status on tests that do not differentiate between flu and the coronavirus. And just a quick stat on that, I'm looking at the MDHS, HHS, weekend ending July 6th, the 2018, 2019 flu season. Congregate setting respiratory virus outbreaks, schools K through 12, college had nine outbreaks for the year. Long-term care had 60, healthcare facilities had one, daycares had zero, homeless shelters had one, correctional facilities had eight, others had zero, for a total of 79 outbreaks of the flu season over the course of the whole season. Flash forward to weekend ending July 3rd, 2021, schools, this is for congregating respiratory virus outbreaks, schools K through 12 and college, zero outbreaks, long-term care, zero outbreaks, healthcare facility, zero outbreaks, daycare, zero outbreaks, homeless shelter, zero outbreaks, correctional facilities, zero outbreaks, others, zero outbreaks for the entire year for the flu. So it just makes me wonder. So I'll just finish this real quick. This is from C.S. Lewis. Of all the tyrannies, a tyranny sincerely exercised for the good of its victims may be the most oppressive. It would be better to live under robber barons than under omnipotent moral busybodies. The robber baron's cruelty
Mr. Humphrey, your time is up.
His stupidity might at some point
Thank you, Mr. Humphrey.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
But those who torment us over our own good will torment us without end and they do so with the approval of their own conscience.
Thank you, Mr. Humphrey. Your time is up.
They need to be more likely to be at heaven and at the same time, be likely to be hell.
Next, I have Jessica Pulis. Jessica Pulis, please come up and speak. And after Jessica Pulis, I have Lindsay Hope.
Mr. Humphrey, your time is up.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jessica Pulis, I'm a mother of three, seven, five, and third grade. Before our children started school, we were living abroad. We made it a priority to find our new home to return to in the Birmingham school system, specifically Harlan Elementary. We wanted to live in this district because it was the best in the state, because it was a no-brainer to get a quality education for our children, because there was access to resources and to forward-thinking opportunities. However, the past two years, that feeling of equality education has been less than that. We have been faced with challenges the past two years, and unfortunately, the education of our children has been compromised. I speak specifically about my daughter, Josephine, JoJo also, who during fourth grade last year was out of school for an entire month due to close contact, never diagnosed, and lost her luster for learning. She is the one that thrived in the classroom in helping others to learn, to expand her knowledge. In that short period of time, I saw the light of her learning disappear. It breaks my heart that she doesn't enjoy school anymore. This is just one example, and I'm sure, like we heard tonight, that there are many more across the district, county, and the state. To touch on the mask mandate, I'm not here to spew off data points and testing accuracies because we all know that the data can be skewed to whoever wants to tell the story. I think of the kindergartner who is starting school, who may not have to read and relies on mouth movements from their teacher to help sound out the letter. I think of the child that has a hard time of hearing and relies on lip reading to help them understand. I think of my seventh grader who hides behind the mask because she's insecure, but doesn't get to see a friendly smile from a fellow student or a teacher to help make her feel welcomed. I think of my fifth grader who asked, do we still have to wear them on the playground? I need a break from that thing on my face. I know there are many families that feel masks that help them protect their children and that is their right to do whatever is right for their child, not for mine. Parents should have the choice. For my family, I don't want them breathing in what should be naturally coming out for five to six hours a day. For my family, I choose to take that risk. I work in the media industry and I have seen firsthand how fear can be implemented by thousands of dollars being spent, by people constantly saying the same message over and over and over again with only one side of the story. Bottom line is this virus is real. The variants are real. The virus isn't going away and new variants will come and go. When will we stop allowing fear to dictate our lives and realize that there is a way we can live with this virus and mandating masks on our children isn't one of them? Parents should have the right to choose health decisions for their children. BPS has the obligation to provide quality education and provide opportunities for our children to thrive. Thank you.
Lindsay Hope. Lindsay Hope. I have Brian Fator.
Fred?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought you were here with me, okay. Thanks for letting me speak. Hopefully you can hear me.
Yes.
I'll do my best to share my thoughts and facts respectfully because I do respect everyone here. And my fellow parents who have been here the last several months giving you fact after fact after fact. But I'm human and to say that I'm upset is an understatement. I wanted to trust you. When you said that you would give parents choice, we applauded and thanked you for making a decision that I'm sure was not easy. But that decision would put the health and education decisions firmly in the hands of the parents who love them. Health and education is not one size fits all. I respect the people who, who are okay with the masks. I respect the people who are not okay with the masks. But health and education is not one size fits all. So learn it, leaving the freedom of choice intact benefits everyone. But my gut, gut kept telling me that I couldn't trust you and the rug may be pulled out at any time. And here we are. My gut was right, like it almost always is. You have made a decision that strips our freedom and divides and separates. And we can see it here tonight. We are divided and I can't stand it. It breaks my heart. I hate this division. I am not political. I am as, I've divided, voted across the board and I hate the division that this has happened. I hate it. It breaks my heart. This is not inclusivity. This is something the district claims to want more of, inclusivity. This is not inclusive. You told us there would be no mandates unless local or state health departments, who are not elected officials, or make the law, would mandate that. And that hasn't changed. They have not mandated this. They have strongly recommended this. And that hasn't, what hasn't changed also in that is that the blessing in all of this is that kids are not greatly affected and they have that 99.99% rate of survival rate. My kids got it, we got it. I understand that there are some people who may not do well with this. But again, what, not one size fits all. And I am heartbroken that you are going to force masks on especially K through eighth graders, even during low transmission? Where is the science behind that? We want the evidence. What also hasn't changed is that this What also hasn't changed is that this virus is forty thousand times smaller than that single strand of the end of your hair, and it can fit through most masks. This is science. This is cloth and paper mask. This fact is there. And the fact is, it may be just a mask for some. Some kids may do fine with it. My kids don't, and that's not me doing that. My kids literally suffer wearing this. My husband has asthma. It can trigger PTSD. It triggers anxiety. It's just, it isn't just a mask. It's potential harm, and there should be choice, period. When will this end, and when will you stand up for our freedoms being stripped away? But I'm no longer waiting for that. We are pulling my kids. I'm sure there's people in the other room cheering. I don't care. I'm taking my tax dollars elsewhere. My kids are going elsewhere. Thank you.
Will you tell me, how did I pronounce your last name? Brian? Flatter, Flatter, sorry.
My name is Brian Flatter. I've worked at BPS for the past fifteen years, three years starting at BCS and now for the past twelve at Seale High School, where I'm also a graduate, class of nineteen ninety-three. Most importantly, I am a Birmingham parent of two beautiful children who will be entering first and third grades. Our students' social, emotional well-being. The nature of my job has been made infinitely more challenging over the last eighteen months, and my hope was for this year to return to normal. I'm very concerned about the damage that universal masking is doing to our children's emotional well-being and development. It is no secret that we've seen a sharp increase during the pandemic of mental health issues. We may never know the true cost of the damage that masking, quarantines, testing, unwarranted fearful responsibility that has been placed on our children. At, at Seale specifically, our mission is to always act with compassion, think with reflection, and perform with honor. If we maintain these restrictive exclusionary mandates, are we modeling these ideals? To think with reflection is to think critically, and it is vital to help our students reach beyond, reach beyond memorizing facts or blindly following authority. I don't blame any of you for being overwhelmed and feeling as though you don't have clarity at any given moment on how to make the right call. None of us on our own can expect to be one hundred percent informed with the information necessary to craft a mandate that provides for every opinion, belief, approach to facing challenges that dramatically affect the lives of others. It is an enormous responsibility, which is why you partner with parents and allow them to choose how their children participate in school regarding masks and bodily autonomy. What you should not do is allow unelected officials the power to co-parent with us. There is no law that requires you to take this guidance from the MDHHS or Oakland County or CDC and make it mandatory. You can post the recommendations in every building, but it is wrong to mandate them. I don't expect you to be scientists. I know there's a lot of information out there. You can listen to health professionals and pop culture and all of that, but we deserve choice, and we, and that is how we include everyone in the learning environment in Birmingham public schools. And I'll just give myself a moment if, is there something you wanted to say?
Um, yes.
Okay. Just get up close to my head.
Hello. First things first, we do judo, and when we came back, we, we did one day with trying out wearing masks. We had a hard time breathing easily. And, yeah.
And so this is, you know, something that's been taken away from him because he can't do judo with a mask, and he can't do school like this either. So, thank you, Finn.
Moskovitz. Emma Moskovitz. Next, I have Katie Pierce. Do you think Emma left?
Are you Emma or Katie? Your full name? I'm sorry, name? What's the full name?
Emma. Thank you, Emma. Thank you, honey. Okay, very good.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, yes, we can.
My name is Emma. I go to girls, I'm going through my junior year, and I've gone to, I've gone to Birmingham School District since. Well, kindergarten. And I want to thank you so very much for enforcing masks. I went back to school for about two days-ish last year and. Yeah, I was first on the phone with my mom, like, we were very, very involved with the children thing, and I was kind of worried, which is why I went back home. People here who are saying how, oh, we shouldn't wear masks. I think you're not listening, though, to why people want us to wear masks, because wearing a mask is not about keeping yourself safe, it's about keeping the people around you safe. A person cannot protect themselves with a mask. The protection comes from those around you. When you choose not to wear a mask, you are making a choice, and that choice is not to protect those around you. And just, I heard you all laughing at me, like, really? I'm fifteen. I turned sixteen in like two weeks.
Please allow her to speak.
Oh, anyways. But yeah, that is all that I have to say. I thank you for my time, for your time.
Thank you so much, honey. Appreciate it. Next, I have Katie Pierce. Katie Pierce, please come up. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, perfectly. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, I'm Katie Pierce. I plan to make a comment just to say thank you for following the public health guidelines put forward by experts. But after sitting here in this chair, here in the front row since six fifty-five, I have something else I'd like to say, and it couldn't be more fitting that I follow Emma Moskovitz, the fifteen-year-old who just came up here with, it takes courage to come up in front of any crowd. And from this chair, I don't think the camera can really see the dynamics of what's going on with this meeting, so I want to explain for the other people in the other room and also for, at eight fifteen, I checked, there were a hundred seventy-two people watching on YouTube. So for those people, just to understand the dynamics, we have a room full of unmasked folks on this side, three of us have masked, as well as, as y'all on the, on the administration team, about forty people in this room. And on the other side of the wall here, in a separate room, kind of like an overflow room, if we were at like a church, it'd be an overflow room, they're watching on the screen, there's a room full of masked people. And so in this, in this, and then there's a hundred seventy-two on YouTube. So from my chair here, what I'm hearing, that you probably can't hear at home on the YouTube if you're watching, you might not be able to hear upfront, and you certainly can't hear across that wall, is the comments that have been made to people like Emma. And I've been, I'm a note taker, it's a nervous habit. There's been booing, which you've heard. There's been comments saying that's lies, you're a joke. There's been laughter, heckling. Board member Azluni, I know that you've tried to stop the heckling several times. The masked parents were told to shut up. They were told to stay home. Why are you here? If you have, if you don't like it, stay home. There was one board-certified physician that came up, and he was asked, is he a physical therapist? No, he, he very clearly said he's a board-certified physician. To top it off, we have one hail Hitler, and to the woman who said she had health issues, she was told to lose weight. Now, I, I have a lot of, I'm very impressed with Emma. She was, of all the people that have come up to speak, she was one of the few that turned to the crowd to say, this isn't, this isn't how we treat one another. And Emma going to high school, she probably is well aware there's an anti-bullying policy. And I haven't memorized it, I haven't had much need to look it up, but I looked it up tonight, and gestures and comments by parents and administrator students that are seen as threatening or bullying are not to be tolerated. They're not to be tolerated by us parents, and they're not to be tolerated by administration. So as I said, I plan to come here to thank you for the, for following public health guidance, but I'm also asking you now to please do something about this before my children go back to school. If they get heckled, harassed, and bullied, this is not, this is not acceptable. We can do better than this in Birmingham. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Pierce. And lastly, I have Teresa Sanders. Teresa Sanders. Teresa Sanders. Teresa Sanders, or we're going to move on with our, our board meeting?
Oh, we need a card. We, we get, we need a card.
Excuse me, is this, are you Teresa?
I'm Tressa Sanders.
Okay, okay.
Perfect. Thank you. I'm going to use her minutes. Okay. She, you are. Mrs. Maxwell, you've already used your time. Do you have a?
I'm using her minutes.
And you're, so you're speaking for Tressa Sanders?
Yes.
Okay.
Got it.
Okay.
My name is Annie Maxwell, and I'm twelve years old. I have breathing problems, and it's hard for me to breathe at school when I have to wear the mask. Why do we have to wear masks if it's, if they do nothing and it's just harder for us to, like, wear? It's making it worse for kids at school. It makes them, like, hurt inside, and it ruins us. Trust me, I hate wearing masks, and I got yelled at by a ton of my teachers because I had my mask below my nose or something because I couldn't breathe. Like, in my opinion, masks don't do much. You can wear your mask, and you're safe, right? So if I don't want to be safe, I don't have to. It's perfectly fine for me to have my beliefs and for you to have yours. I'm not getting forced to do something I don't want to do. That's not your place to tell me what to do. People touch their mask and get it dirty from sweat and from dirt on their hands and touch their face. I had COVID twice, and so did my family. And guess what? I'm not dead, am I? Nope, I'm perfectly fine, not sick, one vet. I'm not a disgusting human being because I don't want something in my body that will hurt me and make my body go into failure. Please don't force us to do something we know is fake. I'm sure you wouldn't like that if we did that to you. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more comment from, we just got this last comment in from Nina Boj.
Hi, thank you for having us here today. I actually was here earlier with my two daughters. They participate in different athletics in the district, and I had to take them home because of the time. And I walked in just in time to hear another parent talking about bullying, and quite honestly, my blood's boiling right now because this is the feeling that I have had through the majority of the pandemic from people who pass judgment without a right to do so. And so I'm disgusted at what I'm seeing with this happening one way. For years, I wanted to come here and speak, and I haven't, but now I am, because it's disappointing. We lived in the district, we moved out of the district, and we came back when we had children of school age. And to see something like this and now have to be contemplating to leave Birmingham as residents here because we're not allowing parents to make a decision. My older daughter was in tears when I had to leave her at home because she wanted to come here and speak tonight, and I didn't want her to put herself out there just yet, and I didn't want her to, just due to the time, she was already clearly upset, but she's shaken by the fact that she doesn't have the ability to choose for her own body. So how I can look at a board of adults who can be okay with that for others, it's just saddening, right? So I just, I hope you all make a decision based on not just data, but put yourself in somebody's shoes. Like, I heard another parent say, how would you feel if you wanted to wear this mask and I didn't allow it for you, and I ripped it from you? How would that make you feel? And think about how many parents and how many children you're doing that to. And that's, thanks, that's all that I had to say, and I know you're in a difficult situation, but I appreciate you taking the time to hear people out. And I do have one more thing. Clearly, I was not prepared. I didn't come to, to speak today, I just came to, to listen. The last thing, too, I have a parent request. They asked for data. Words for data that you have, that you're making these decisions on, that masking their children is going to prevent transition in school-aged children. I haven't heard it, and I, the gal right here, Lori, you dismissed the parent that asked that. So I'd love to see it. If you can't share it here, send it out with these decisions. I know you can't because it doesn't exist, so, thank you.
Okay, and I think this is the last one. We have Mitch Dipirno.
Good evening. I was really fast. I wasn't really expecting to say anything tonight, but listening to all these people come up and some get very emotional, I kind of thought, collected a few things, and I'm a retired person, I don't have children in your school, but listening to people talk about wearing masks or not wearing masks, and very adamant about it, I, I see that people who wear masks believe that the masks work, and people that don't wear masks believe that the masks don't work. You saw a couple of people come up here tonight, and I've seen this three or four times, where they take the N95 or surgical mask, not N95, but surgical mask like many people wear, and hold it up in its plastic wrapper, says this does not protect you from a disease, or COVID-19 for that matter. That very basic truth is simply being ignored, it seems, and, I mean, if you can, if you can, if you're going to ignore the statement of the mask manufacturer that is, people are wearing, if you know anything about a surgical mask, it's really meant for a sterile environment, so when a doctor's operating on somebody, if there's a splash of blood or some type of bodily fluid, it doesn't get splashed into their mouth, and usually they wear goggles, so it doesn't enter your mucus membranes. But it's not going to filter out an aerosol that's so small in breathing every day, and people need to understand that. No one here who doesn't want to wear the mask is trying to tell somebody who wants to wear a mask or believe that they work that they can't. They want their individual freedoms upheld, and I think that's a reasonable request. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. We got through over sixty-some comments. I thank you all for coming. When I say that we hear you, we read, we listen. You have to trust us as a board, as elected officials, where we take not just one perspective into account, but several. So thank you for coming. We are now going to conduct the rest of our board meeting. You're more than welcome to stay. If not, this would be a time when you could exit. So next, after public comment, we have our general consent agenda. On general consent, we have a personnel report, we have minutes for the July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one organizational meeting, we have minutes for the July twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one special meeting with a closed session, we also have the minutes for the August third, twenty twenty-one study session, and a resolution nineteen to accept the consent agenda item.
I move to accept the consent agenda?
I second to accept resolution nineteen, which is the consent agenda.
Please, any comments? Okay, all those in favor of passing resolution nineteen for consent agenda, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Joan, please note, it was a four-zero vote to pass resolution nineteen. Next, we have, I don't know why I'm ringing you so much. I apologize. Next, we have our personnel report. Mr. Navaras? Is that me? I don't know.
Before you today, two resolutions on the report that have been previously explained to you that we were in negotiations with some of our collective bargaining groups. The first report, or the resolution you see is for a paraprofessional contract. This was recently resolved with our paraprofessional group, with all of our, about a hundred and seventy-eight paraprofessionals that work primarily in our special ed area, as well as hall monitors in our high schools and various. that work primarily in our special ed area, as well as hall monitors in our high schools and various other roles, ESL, alternative ed, and then some of our general ed, paraprofessionals. So they have negotiated a two-year contract with the district that they recently have ratified. That contract, again, this group is a very difficult group in terms of recruitment and retention. Again, the salaries are not generally very high for these paraprofessional positions, but we have looked at the competition, and we're having difficult times recruiting and retaining, so we have done some additional work on increasing the wages to make them more competitive. Previous to this, the minimum salary was in, actually, the very high $12 range. And we were hiring oftentimes in at least the $13 range, but that wasn't sufficient much longer, given the competition that is out there now and the shortage of workers. So what has been negotiated is this upcoming year, an increase of the wage scale by about 85 cents per step on average. The current step one, which I told you is around $1,278 or so, is going to be eliminated. And with the increase, the first step will go to $1,425 this year. Everyone will receive a full step increase. The following year, 2223, the steps will increase by about an average of 75 cents. Again, step one will be eliminated to bring the minimum rate to $15 an hour. Now, that's a little bit misleading because these paraprofessionals do not work a full year. They only work a school year. So it's only about 1,200, 1,300 hours total work hours, not your typical 2,080 hours that you would find in a full-time, 12-month position. So again, eliminating step one, $15 an hour minimum step, and everyone else receives a full step increase. We also have a differential that's in the contract for paraprofessionals who work primarily with our ASD students, CI students, alternate ed, ESL, and a few other areas. So there's a differential that's added to the hourly rate that's being increased from 91 cents to $1.10 per hour. And then the paraprofessionals recommended, we negotiated a referral bonus to allow people within this group to refer people for these positions. And if they do, then there'd be a $500 referral bonus that they would receive in two different installments based on how long the person stays. The cost of this contract is about $250,000 increase each year. So, and this is a two-year deal that would be, that would end on 6/30/2023.
Okay, thank you. Trustees, can I get a motion to pass resolution 20, ratification of tentative contract with the Birmingham Association of Paraprofessionals, which is called our BAP, for the school year? 2021, 22.
I move to accept resolution 20, the paraprofessionals' contract.
Moved by trustee Ras.
Seconded.
Seconded by trustee Young. Trustees, open for discussion. We did hear much of this negotiations before, so I appreciate it, and I'm so glad that this contract has been worked out. And I also hope that this is going to attract and maintain our paraprofessionals, you know, more importantly, because they are such a big part of our, our student learning and teacher help and so forth. Are there any other comments?
My understanding is that, my understanding is that we're already seeing some benefit to the increase in the hourly rate advertising it. Is that, is that true? Are we seeing paraprofessional positions being filled?
Yes, we have been able to get more of a campaign.
Great. That's great. Thank you.
Trustees, any other comments? Okay, all those in favor of passing resolution 20, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Joan, please note that it is passed by 4-0. Thank you so much.
And Robbins' negotiations team.
Wonderful.
The other one I wanted to bring before you is not a negotiated contract or anything that is part of a collective bargaining agreement, but this is a recommendation that's been brought forward. As a recommendation from a group of our folks here, including Ann, who oversees the CSOs and the program, that they oversee, as well as Laura Tinsley and Danielle Mitchellson for the early childhood programs. This is to, a recommendation to increase the rates of pay for the various jobs that exist under these two programs. We have not done any significant increases to these pay rates for quite a while. We have fallen significantly behind in terms of being competitive. It is very difficult, as you probably know already, to recruit for early childhood positions, kids' club, and some of the programs that exist here. So there was a lot of work done to look at what is out there and to also increase the rates. We had rates of pay in, like, the $11 an hour range for some of the assistant positions. So again, not very competitive any longer. And even some of the teacher rates, which are required to have bachelor's degrees and additional education, to hold many of these positions were often in the low $20 an hour range, too. So it was not sufficient any longer, so a lot of work was done to make some recommendations to changes in the early childcare and we care programs for the teachers, the assistant teachers, the substitutes, the office assistant supports these programs, as well as the GSRP director that is under this program as well. So you can see the rates that have been changed and recommended there. The minimum rates for the, some of the assistant positions will be at the $13, $13 an hour range. So at least it's gone up a little bit and allows us some flexibility to hire people who have some more experience. The recommended increases for the early childhood programs and the we care programs is going to be about $122,000 annually. And again, remember, these programs are covered through tuition, so we anticipate that these increases will cover, based on past experiences with revenue brought in, that these would be covered with the tuition dollars. The other one is the CSO programs. These particularly are the CSOs themselves, the early childhood, elementary preschool programs that they oversee, as well as our kids' club programs in all of our schools. So this is right-making recommendation to increase the teachers and assistant teachers in the preschool programs, the directors and the assistants in the kids' club programs, and as well as the CSO. So this, again, is a little bit, a different group, a little larger, so the recommended, or the increases, we anticipate would be about $260,000 this year. Also, we expect that to be covered through programs, both with tuition and other programs bought in through community ed through the CSOs.
Great, thank you. Again, we did hear about these negotiations prior, so I'm going to ask all those, pardon me, I was going to call for a motion. Thanks, sorry. So may I please get a motion for resolution 21, the approval of compensation increases for early childhood programs and CSO programs for the year 2021, 22?
I so move that we approve resolution 21, the compensation increases for early childhood programs and the CSO programs for 2021 slash 22. And I second that motion.
Okay. Motion moved by trustee Whitman, seconded by trustee Young. We can now open this up for discussion. If you have any questions or comments, trustees?
I just know when we brought up this, when Dean first provided us information about this, there was a lot of discussion, and maybe in part, I don't want to put you on the spot, trustee Ras, but I think in part from you, just about how much we appreciate the work that the CSOs do, the work that the early childhood teachers are doing. And I know Ann mentioned that sometimes that, that group doesn't, doesn't always hear that, especially not directly from us. So if they tune in to the four-hour and 15-minute mark of this YouTube video, they can hear me now singing their praises. And just, just knowing that, that we really appreciate it. I'm getting my first dose of CSO love and appreciation with a rising kindergartner, so I'm already seeing just how much fun and how big of a role they play in a welcoming atmosphere for the little ones. So, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Young, for echoing my sentiments from our study session. Thank you.
Trustees, any other comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor of passing resolution 21, the approval of compensation increase for early childhood programs and CSO programs, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Joan, please note that resolution 21 passes 4-0.
Thank you very much. And again, I also would like to applaud the incredibly hard work that Laura Tinsley does for our early childhood programs.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Danielle Mitchellson for our we care, all of our CSOs, and all the people who work in these programs. They are probably unsung and often not seen. They're in other buildings sometimes, but, you know, they work with our littlest learners and the ones that we hope to articulate all the way up through our schools. And I will also put a plug in for them. They have several positions they are still looking to fill in both, in all the programs. They are posted. If anybody knows anybody who's interested in teacher assistant positions, the kids' club positions, the floater positions even, they have postings available, and they are looking for people. So I will put in a public plug here on TV to have people go and recommend people for these positions so they can get those filled part of the school year.
Thank you. Thank you so much. That concludes our personnel report. Next, we have our business services report by Mr. Jim Larson Childler. Yes, please. Thank you. Am I getting too close to it?
It may be you.
Don't mind. Try it.
Put your phone away, too.
I don't know.
So a budget amendment for last year, it's a little unusual doing it after June 30, but in this case, it's for federal grants. It is necessary for reporting and auditing purposes, so the district is required to complete what we call a schedule of expenditures of federal awards report as of June 30, 2021. This report must match the award letters that we receive. So we actually have two separate issues related to this amendment. The first one is, the district was notified of ESER 2 COVID funding of 2,205,735, but we did not receive the award letter until July 23. So we cannot have that in our budget. The second issue is, actually involves IDA funding from 2020. What Oakland Schools does is Oakland Schools allocates that money. When they have carryover money, they go back and they allocate it to districts on a proportionate share. $35,486 was distributed to our parochial schools. And in turn, their expenditures came through. We were notified of this on July 21. So we have to come back to match the awards to the expenditures for the CIPA, which will be in the audit.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, so we have in front of us, trustees, resolution 22. Resolution 22 states, I need glasses, goodness, it's the amendment to the 2020-2021 General Appropriations Budget Act. So can I get a motion, trustees, to pass?
I move to, to pass or to consider resolution number 22, amendment to the 2020-21 General Appropriations Budget Act. I second.
Moved by trustee Young, seconded by trustee Whitman. Okay, we open it up for discussion. Trustees, do you have any comments or questions for Mr. Larson Childler? Nope. Okay, very good. Then we will proceed with the vote. All those in favor of passing resolution 22, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Joan, please note that passes 4 to 0. Next, we have, we're moving right along in our other reports, we have resolution 23. And this is the acceptance of a new consulting company for our policy update. It's an acceptance of Miller Johnson Attorneys and an update, to update policy and regulation manual. Trustees, do we, is, are there anything, anything you want to say about this?
Just that we have in the past had Neola
Neola.
Help with our board policy, and we would like to change from Neola to Miller Johnson and work with attorney Kevin Sutton to streamline some of our board policies and to make sure that they're up to date.
I am so looking forward to this streamline, let me tell you, because if any of you out there have ever seen what the policy binder looks like, it probably takes two people to carry it. And so this is work that I'm looking forward to doing, should have been done a long time ago, and we're ready to tackle it. And so I'd like to ask trustees if I can get a motion to pass resolution 23?
I move to consider resolution number 23 to get Miller Johnson to review our policy manual.
Motion by trustee Young, seconded by trustee Ras. Okay, now we now open this up for discussion.
Do we know when, when will they begin the process?
Yes, we could start early, as next week, I believe. August 24 should this pass.
Nice.
And that would consist of those of
On the ad hoc policy committee?
Yeah, policy committee.
And that's comprised of myself, trustee Young, and trustee Hokumer, as well as Dr. Roberson.
And we're in the process of planning that initial meeting and getting that on the calendar.
That's nice. That's quick.
Yeah.
Moving right along.
Yeah, and you'll see that with this addition, I think it makes it more feasible to achieve or work towards one of the goals that's in the board goals that I have the opportunity to revise. It talks about eliminating old policy, integrating new policy. That's really going to be a much more attainable goal with the help of Miller Johnson's expertise.
Trustees, any other comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor of passing resolution 23, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Joan, please note, that was another 4-0. Okay. Next, we have, this is the Oakland County School Board Association, a proposal to amend the bylaws. And there are two resolutions that come with this, and I think trustee Young, I'm going to turn this over to you.
And just thanks goes to Vice President Hokumer, who is our Birmingham representative on the OCSBA and did share some information with me in advance of the meeting. In the packet, you'll see the two, the two actual ballots. But we were also provided some information about the changes in the bylaws. While overwhelmingly they're moving language around, cleaning up language, there is some helpful changes. For example, the, people could only appear by telephone when, when they were going to be absent but available during that time. That's now been expanded to include the technology that's become so popular during the pandemic, Zoom and other forms of communication. Also, like in other areas of education, the OCSBA board has had a little bit of difficulty retaining board members. There is a policy to immediately fill any vacancies. That's going to be changed to, to allow a little more leeway time, as long as there's a certain number of voting members still on the board at that time, just to give a little more flexibility given those difficulties. So trustee Hokumer did share with me that she enthusiastically supports these amendments. I do as well. And so I'd like to move the board to consider approval of OCSB proposal to amend the bylaws.
Thank you so much. Trustee, yeah, it's, it's
Yeah. So I would, I would ask that the board approve all proposed and amended resolutions as presented.
Trustees, do I have a motion?
Bylaws as presented, sorry, not resolutions.
There are
Yeah, bylaws first, and then the next.
The same thing.
Okay. Then, yeah, so this is 2021 bylaws amendments, which I recommend we approve. But I don't know if you want to do a roll call vote or just the standard. Yay or nay?
No, not really. So trustees, do I have, I mean, do we approve all bylaws? Oakland County School Board Association?
Aye.
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 And so it looks like what happens with Jen, you check the box, and then
And then, yes, and that goes back to Oakland schools.
Right. So the board approves 4-0, all bylaws, all bylaw amendments as presented. The next OCBA, OCSBA item for consideration is 2021 resolutions. Much like our board goals, the OCSBA sets, not quite goals, but areas of focus and priority for the group as a whole. And while these were provided in advance, I think it's helpful for the community and all that to know that these include things like prioritizing the findings of the School Finance Research Collaborative. These include expanding broadband access and device provision. These include creative resolutions to teacher shortages, evidence-based decision-making, opposition to unfunded mandates, increasing school aid. There, there's a special provision about increased mental health services. And this is just to touch on a few that I know really resonate with a lot of what the community has been coming to us about. Universal preschool, parameters around lame duck, special education. And it does cite to other national organizations that have similar and sometimes different priorities, but when aligned with ours, the OCSBA will stand behind them. And again, Vice President Hokumer found, enthusiastically supported the 2021 resolutions. And I do as well. I recommend that the board approve all proposed and amended resolutions as presented by the OCSBA.
Okay, and then we'll just do a vote, the same we did in the past, for this recommendation of the revisions for the bylaws for Oakland County School Board Association. So all those in favor of passing the bylaws, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, it's not the bylaws, it's the.
Revision.
Resolutions.
Resolution, sorry. Joan, please note, thank you, that was 4-0. Thank you. And next, we have, on our agenda, we have our board goal discussions. But as this is our first read of the revised board goals, I believe I had a mo, or I'm going to motion that we table this discussion so that we can have all the other trustees present, seeing as there are only four here.
I second that motion.
Okay. So I'd like to please have the trustees vote for this table of the goals discussion. And we will have a second read and then vote on it in our September board meeting. So all those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Joan, 4-0 to table the goals discussion until the next BOE meeting. Thank you. Okay. It's been a busy evening, a very busy evening. And we now move to the last couple of items on our agenda. And we've got the calendar. And I've got a few things I'd like to point out. On August 24, we have the great Big Apple Breakfast kickoff. This is where our teachers are welcomed back, our bus drivers, our paraprofessionals, our secretaries. It is truly a district celebration for the school year. And then after that, our teachers go back to work. They've got their professional development days. And our kids start school on August 30. I don't know if there's any half.
This one is August 30 is a half day.
Half day.
And I believe that that week also, our kindergarteners will have a half day during that week so that they're able to have assessment time with the teachers.
I think kindergarten, yeah, that whole week is. And Friday of that week is a day off.
Friday is no school, it's the Friday before Labor Day. So there's no school, of course, on Friday, and then again on Monday.
Right. And then Tuesday starts full day.
Full day.
Here it goes.
Here we go is right. Trustees, any other calendar items? How about announcements? Do we have announcements?
Our next meeting will be September 7. No?
No.
So our next, so our next study session will be on Tuesday, September 14.
Our next study session?
Yes, study session, yep. And then the meeting after that will be on the 28th of September.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Whitman.
Right, because Rosh Hashanah is on September 7.
That's right, okay. So we push it back a week.
Yep, so we will not meet again as a group until the 14th.
Okay. Trustees, anything else?
We may be, we may need a special meeting for teacher contract.
Good. The calendar, you know, I know that was an initial phase of negotiations. It's great it came out when it did.
That's great. Trustees, any other comments? Well, I'm going to look at my phone, ooh, for the time. It is 10:05, and I'm going to say that this meeting, August 17, is adjourned. Thank you.